We have a meeting to order, the Planning Commission in San Carlos for August 20, 2016. Please stand, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There we have the roll call.
Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
Chair Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Roof. And Commissioner Yakaponi is excused.
This is public comment. Public comment is limited. Two items on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to the staff for their attention or have the matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the last minutes, July 16. Any discussion or corrections?
I move we approve the minutes of the July 16, 2018 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I second that.
For the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Dugan?
Approved.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. And we have approval of minutes of a special Planning Commission meeting, July 24, that we need to approve also. Is there any discussion from that meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes of July 24.
Second.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Approved.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to public hearing if anybody wants to speak. I would appreciate it if you would fill out one of these forms back on the table and hand it to any one of us as we go along. The procedure for public hearings, the staff will present a report on the history physical features of the application, followed by the staff's recommendations. The applicant may then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing shall be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendations. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door, handed to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker shall come up to the microphone to speak since this meeting is being recorded. And this will assist the staff in preparing the minutes. Normally, we limit speaking on items to about two minutes if there are a lot of speakers. So far, there are not that many speakers, so I won't enforce that yet. First project is Windin Way, grading and dirt haul certificates.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Ballantyne. I'm a contract planner with the city. Been working on this project for a while. As you may recall, this was before you last month. So yeah, specifically, it's regarding the grading and dirt haul certificate, as you requested it to come back based on neighbor concerns. Just a quick recap, the resolutions and motions that you made at the last meeting were recommendation to City Council for the approval of the sequel addendum, the master development plan, a lot line adjustment, and the tree removal permit. And then you also made final actions on the road abandonment, general plank consistency finding, as well as the master grading plan. Just a really brief overview, since you've already sort of given you a full detailed history. Here's the project location. Closer up aerial of the project site. And again, it's for five single-family houses along with proposed roadwork to an existing dirt road. So again, specifically before you, it was really just the grading and dirt haul route certificate. And what they're proposing is this is just for the roadwork, and they're proposing 3,375 cubic yards of cut. And then they would then put all of that as fill directly back on the site. However, it would entail 25 truck trips, round trips for the entire road project, and this is prominently for debris such as vegetation. And the reason that you all requested that this come back before you was based on staff's input as well as neighbor concerns. The originally proposed route would have utilized Torino Drive and then to Britton Avenue, and that was problematic for a number of reasons, one of which was a truck a couple times had hit a house near Torino Drive. So we tried to revise it to address some of those concerns and to utilize San Carlos Avenue instead, although it does still require the use of Chesham Avenue. And a couple of changes that we've since made. Condition seven in the certificate basically just states compliance is required with the final focus environmental impact report. This typically goes without saying, but it really just reinforces that point. And then condition 11 was based on Planning Commission input as well as input from the applicant and community. And that was to limit the hauling activities to 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then for trucks with more than nine wheels, limited to 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then we're also proposing, based on additional input received since that meeting from the community, and in talking with the applicant, to really limit parking on Chesham Avenue as much as possible. However, the applicant is requesting to be able to utilize just the portion where Windin Way intersects with Chesham to be able to park vehicles there. So we do propose making that change to condition nine. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Available for questions, and the applicant, I believe, would also like to say a few things on this matter as well.
So could you, or the applicant, show the before and after dirt haul routes? And could you just, I mean, not everyone was here back in 2008 whatever.
Yeah.
So could you sort of explain what happened with the EIR?
Yeah, so starting with the EIR, this was 2005. First, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. Then that was sued by an alliance within the community. And based on that lawsuit, they determined that a final focus or that an environmental impact report was required, and that was specifically for the wood rat as well as for the bush mallow plant. And so that's where the EIR came into play, and that was prepared. And then since that was a number of years ago, in 2009 that that was adopted, we since prepared an addendum that basically looked at the issues and made sure that all of the issues that were addressed in the EIR were still adequate. So yeah, and then in terms of the dirt haul route, I actually do not have a specific graphic showing that. We just, in writing essentially. I'm trying to pull up. But you can see here on the larger graphic, essentially, the first route was taking it from Chesham and then eventually to Torino and taking it down south to Britton. And so you can see there's quite a few small-
Could you give me another pointer?
It doesn't work as well, I would say, on the screen.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, essentially, you have to go through quite a few county roads to get down to Britton Avenue. And so this new proposed route goes north to San Carlos and essentially reduces the use of county roads to some extent. And really, the big concern was also, as I mentioned, that intersection with Torino was a hard intersection, and a house had actually gotten hit by a large truck.
Were they going out Holly or out Whipple?
So they would go San Carlos, then to Comunal Real, and then to Britton, and then to 101.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the staff presenter?
Could you just explain briefly how this revised route was notified to the community?
So it was sent to members of the community within, I believe, 300 feet of the project site, and there is a requirement in the code that it's, I believe, at least 10 days' notice. And so it was re-noticed with this new change.
If I can add, in addition to 300 feet from the subject site, all properties, residential properties along the haul route are also notified.
Okay, any other? And will the applicant wish to speak?
Real quick before the, I know we're going to have a public speaking period, but did we receive any email or any other complaints to staff on the revised route?
Yes, thanks for pointing that out. We did receive a letter from Ms. Boyer, and that was provided to all earlier today. And she raised a number of concerns. One of them was with regards to Chesham impacts, both in terms of parking and roadways. She raised concerns with impacts to trees. And she's actually here tonight, and she can re-raise some of those points as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hello again, commissioners. To reintroduce myself, my name is Michael Chilcote. My partner Ronald Grove and I are the two principals and sole owners of this project. Excuse me. Our project team and I would like to thank you for your consideration of this project in our meeting last month. The final agenda item, of course, from that meeting was the grading and dirt haul certificate, which was tabled to today. A few things to point out to the commission concerning this route as it pertains to this project. Typically, much of the evaluation criteria of a haul route pertains to the hauling of dirt. For your edification, please let me clarify that the construction of the new road associated with this project is a cut-and-fill construction procedure, which by definition requires virtually zero off-haul of dirt. Staff had requested from us months ago to quantify the number of trucks estimated to haul dirt from the project site, and we responded with an answer of 25. But not 25 trucks hauling dirt. Our trucks will be hauling general combustibles and deteriorated lumber associated with the existing wood retaining walls. Therefore, 25 truck trips spread across a timeframe we estimate of about 10 weeks, so roughly two and a half trucks a week is what we anticipate. I also wanted to share with the commission and the public in general, the project team's voluntary plan for general traffic management. In speaking with some of the neighbors over the course of the last several months, if not years, listening to comments from last month's hearing, further considering concerns raised in the very recent letter received from Ms. Boyer, and because we are also concerned about health and safety of life and property, our team has formulated the following general traffic management plan that will be followed throughout the course of construction. Point number one, there will be no parking on city streets by employees, subcontractors, or delivery vehicles. All parking will be accommodated on the job site. Number two, depending on the phase of construction, there may be brief periods of time where limited parking at the lower entrance of the project just off Chesham would be utilized, but again, not on Chesham. Number three, there will be no turning around of trucks on city streets. We heard that comment several times. A turnaround area currently exists on the job site. Number four, based on the foregoing, there will be no need to inconvenience the local residents by stopping vehicular traffic or pedestrians walking on city streets. And lastly, we plan to impose a 15 mile an hour speed limit on all trucks above nine wheels for the haul route, from the job site entrance all the way to San Carlos Avenue. This language will be included in all of our trucking and construction contracts, and we will post a 15 mile an hour speed limit sign in plain sight for all trucks to see as they exit the job site. We hope this plan is received beneficially by the commission. Thank you again for your consideration, and we are certainly available to answer any questions.
You did say impose that, Lemon, not oppose.
I did say impose.
I've been air forced around too many jets, like losing some hearing. Thank you.
We planned to impose, yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else from your side? Okay, thank you.
I just have a brief question for the applicant. So 25 total truck loads, I'm glad to hear that'll be spread out over a period of time. That does lessen the impact quite a bit. How many other comings and goings do you predict on a daily basis? Is this a crew of 20? Is it, you know, how many trucks do you think will be? These are very narrow roads with pedestrians, children, people walking dogs. You know, I understand the speed limit only applies to the big trucks, but you know, how much other traffic will this be generating?
Ron, you might be able to quantify this better, but it will, it will literally vary from day to day, right? But again, the job site is such that we will have all parking onsite, okay? Except, as I said, maybe from time to time, depending on what's going on, we may have some parking at the job site entrance, which if you've been there, there's a large cyclone fence there at the entrance and quite a bit of room before you actually get to Chesham. So there may be a little overflow parking, or maybe we might need to remove a few cars to allow some construction activity to occur. But again, no matter what the phase is, all parking will be on the job site.
My concern is more around the traffic to and from and just how narrow the street is with pedestrians, et cetera.
Well, most of the traffic will be employees, laborers, you know, and there are small pickup trucks, and there are Honda Civics and that kind of thing, except for the 25 trucks for off-haul.
Yeah.
That should be the bulk of it.
And I understand this certificate is just for dirt haul, so you know, that's why the speed limit addresses the trucks. But I would just caution you as a developer, you know, you're going to have, you know, it's very narrow streets, pedestrian, you know, I would, if I was you, I would have everyone up on a very short leash as far as how they're driving up and down those streets. You know, the eight trucks leaving at 4:00, you know, when the whistle blows, tearing away at 35, 40 miles an hour up Chesham is, that's going to cause you a lot of problems.
Understood.
Any more questions or comments before we get into public speaking? Cassandra Boyer?
Nice to see you all again. I live at 151 Chesham. I've been there for 39 years. I am a little confused about the parking at the bottom of Chesham. Jeff was just explaining how that may be happening. There's a fire hydrant right there. It's a very little bulb that would go up into the spur of the new development. I can't see how there can be any parking there. You make a hairpin turn at that corner. It's not a corner, you know. I'm just not getting that. I think that would be extremely dangerous. And yeah, it's the job site entrance, but everything should be at the job site, not on Chesham. It's already, you know, as you pointed out, a very narrow area. So there were some other things that I wanted to mention because last time we had so many people here, there wasn't a chance to rebut some of the comments that were made by other speakers. And then after the public hearing closed, I did want to say, and I appreciate the commission urging Monday through Friday as the only time for work to be done coming up into the canyon. And we just had all the work done on San Carlos Avenue, the tree work. That was Monday through Friday only. We in the county should be granted the same respect as San Carlos city residents are. Let's see, also, county involvement is more than the spur of the project because it does involve county roads, Chesham and Windsor, and any damage done to our roads should be the responsibility of the developer to repair, repave, and fix them back to the condition that they're in now. Let's see. I also mentioned that gained at the top of the new Windin Way, that was a settlement, as staff pointed out, that was done with Dacosas, to be a closed road only for the five homes within the development. And if that gets changed in any way, we would request then that the closed legal agreement with Hyde Park be reviewed. Repairian corridor, I know everybody's sick about hearing about the rats, but I'd like to point out that the problem rats, and some people just don't know, but the problem rats are black rats. They're roof rats, we all know them as that. They have the pointy snouts and the non-furry tails. We see them everywhere. They chew your wiring, they get into your garages or your attics, and I mean, they're total pests. The wood rats, and they're not native, by the way, but the wood rats are shy critters. They, I've been here 39 years in my house, and I've only seen one wood rat in my, in my yard, and it was dragged in by a coyote, cat, or dog. Poor thing was probably half eaten. It was dead already at the time. They're shy. They're also called pack rats because what they do is they go and collect stuff, and that's why if you've seen their nests, they're so gigantic because they just keep adding them into the nests. They're not pests. They have a rounded snout like a guinea pig and a furry tail like a squirrel. You cannot mistake a wood rat for a roof rat. Also, let's see, the endangered, there are a lot of different dusky-footed rude wood rats. The endangered species is the riparian. Now, this brings us back to the whole idea about the riparian corridor that we talked about last time. And so not only do these wood rats need to have their nests protected, the riparian corridor habitat also has to be protected, or this project is in violation. Let's see, the creek is the opposite of an alluvial fan. Instead of things coming down and filling out lower, they filter down into the creek. And you know, that's kind of a cool thing. Creek restoration is essential. City of San Carlos in 2005, you guys probably have my copy of the San Carlos Earth Day from 2005, where we had take a look behind the scenes and walk along Pulgas Creek with local experts, plant native trees, and insiders look at your local creek. I just kind of wonder why that focus has changed so dramatically now that we're talking about concreting this creek. Preserving heritage trees and other natural features of the site around the new homes. I have 17 oaks on my property. This is how the canyon is. You want to preserve that. We really would not like to see another Hyde Park. This development has the opportunity to, you know, make something really, really beautiful. A small canyon community, I mean, canyon views, natural creek setting, mature oaks, retaining natural contours and defining creatures of the canyon. These are things that can be made part of this project instead of paving it over and changing everything that is part of that area. Again, just another concern before I leave is the substandard county roads and making sure that we are all safe there on Chesham as trucks come and go with our community. Thank you.
A question for staff. With regards to the roads, I know on other projects, we've asked the pictures have been taken before the work begins. When these, when these projects come up, are the houses coming up as one group, or is it coming up a house at a time?
On this particular project, I believe they're proposing first two, and then another two, and then the last home, so in different phases.
Well, the reason I ask is because from, for the roads perspective, do we need to condition it a dirt haul, or should we condition it when the first house, or when the second or third house comes up? Because like I said, we've conditioned before where we've asked that there are photos be taken before all the traffic starts. So I just wondered when would be the appropriate time to have that added to a condition?
And in terms of traffic, traffic related to construction of the road, construction of?
Well, the existing roads. Whenever we're going to start having a bunch of additional traffic on the existing roads, I believe that we should take pictures, for someone to take pictures. I think the comment, I mean, the city would be wise to do it, but at least if not the city, then the developer should, right? We need to have some before pictures because it could become, it could become an issue, and I think it just protects everyone if there's some photographic documentation of it. So I don't know if we would do that now or later, but I just want to make sure we do it at the appropriate time. That's what I'm asking.
Well, I think that's, through the chair, that sounds like something that would be reasonably related to the grading and dirt haul permit that's before you tonight. We do have a standard condition, at least for the city streets, and I'm not sure if it's made it into this particular item for repair, but it would be good to have that evidence in case something does happen.
Okay, thank you.
Since Ms. Boyer had several questions about the project, Mr. Chilcote, would you like to respond to any of her questions? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to get the-
Well, I did have a question regarding what she was saying specifically about the riparian way, because is the development that's going in going to destroy that, or is that, is that okay? Is that being preserved?
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't quite go over that in this area, just because this is kind of more focused on the dirt haul route. But in the last month's presentation, we focused on, there's this graphic. So I guess to back up. So in order to do any sort of work in that area around the creek, they needed approvals by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And one of the things that came out of that from the Regional Water Quality Control Board is there's a very specific riparian mitigation areas that there's just do-not-touch areas that they're not allowed to impact. And there's areas where they have to preserve the bush mallow plant, for instance, or protect the wood rat. So there are very specific conditions on where they can and cannot work and how they can and cannot impact that creek.
Okay, and I appreciate you going over this. I was at the last month's meeting, so I'm, I'm sorry you're having to duplicate your speech, but I just want to make sure that we've covered everything.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more commissioners have questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next speaker, Mr. David Fedor.
Staff commissioners, David Fedor. I live at 420 Windin Way, which is at the current terminus, upper part of Windin Way and the edge of the project. I read through tonight's packet materials, like to thank staff for their attention to detail on this. There are a lot of decisions to be made in this project. detail on this. There are a lot of decisions to be made in this project, which seem like minor choices but could really have transformative and lasting impacts in this part of the city. I want to discuss two items related to the grading permit that's before us tonight. The first has to do with the proposed roadway design. The current proposal is for an 18-foot paved section plus a three-foot gravel walking path and another 18 inches or so of bio-swell, about 22 and a half feet in total. The roadway is part of a loop that would connect the two existing county roads, Winding Way and Chesham, at each end, both of which have widths generally substantially less than this, about 15 feet, for example, wide in front of my house, the top of Upper Winding Way. So you can visualize this as a sort of fat sausage between two skinny ends being proposed. Because this road would be so much wider than the existing roads in the area, that has resulted in some of the various difficult to mitigate impacts, which we discussed last month, substantial grading, the 10-foot retaining walls for hundreds of feet, which is unprecedented along Chesham or Winding Way, and over 20 protected tree removals along the margins of the existing unpaved road. Given the steep topography here, a wider road results in more impacts, higher walls, and more grading. So I'd ask the commission to consider directing the applicant to selectively reduce the width of the road or the adjoining footpath along the steepest portions of this roadway to mitigate these impacts. This is an approach the county already uses in the neighborhood following their creative rural road design guidelines. Even with the reductions in width, circulation along this new road will still be substantially improved compared to that along the existing connecting streets, which furthermore have street parking on them. Any road width reductions would also help reduce future vehicle entry and egress speeds into narrower adjoining streets. I'm thinking sort of down the new road into Chesham, which would be much narrower. Code supports this request to use judgment on road width. The City Municipal Code, Section 18116140, states that, quote, "Site and structural design shall relate to the natural features of a property, including topography, trees, vegetation, landforms, and drainage channels," and that, quote, "Design shall respect the natural topography produced the least visual impact and require the least grading," end quote. The 2004 settlement agreement between the applicant and the city also touches on this element with its own discussion of reduced road widths by stating that, quote, "The owners shall not be required to extend the roadway into a riparian area or to cut a hillside and install retaining walls in order to maintain constant width of the path," end quote. So it's sort of a square peg, round hole type issue. And I think there could be some discretion that would improve the project in this regard. A quick second point, just an observation on the 2004 settlement agreement. This has been brought up tonight in terms of which were extensively discussed at our last meeting. It was suggested then at that meeting that this voluntary agreement among a subset of stakeholders restricts this commission's or other state deliberations regarding design elements of this project. But I don't believe this is the case. The settlement agreement refers to process. It doesn't dictate outcomes. I was just looking at the agreement. I have a copy here. I can leave. The agreement specifies three main actions, all of which I believe have already been fulfilled. First was payment of attorney's fees. That was completed. Second was an obligation for the city to repair a focused EIR. It was also completed a decade ago. Third, crucially, specifically obligates only the applicant's actions. And so I'll quote from this, under the heading "Modification of Development Proposal," it states, quote, "The owner's development plan for the lot shall be modified in the following ways," and then describes modifications related to the road, the path, and the gate, some of which have been objected to here by neighbors. But even this process requirement has now already been completed, given that the applicant's submission of his development proposal last month was in compliance with those terms. I'd just like to point out the agreement does not specify an obligation for the city to accept those aspects of the applicant proposal. It does not create a justification for any such approvals to potentially violate existing general plan or other municipal code guidelines. And it does not obligate any party, city or applicant, to maintain aspects of those proposal designs over time. I think it's important the city maintain a public and deliberative process through a decision-making on this process. And broadening the interpretation of these settlement elements beyond the actual terms of the settlement as written could potentially present new liabilities for the city and potentially other signatories. Thanks. I can leave my remarks with staff.
I was having a hard time understanding because that's me, not you. One thing I did hear was that Condition 3 that you were talking about does not prevent someone from making modifications in the future. Is that what you said basically?
This could, I think, retain to a few elements. There's an extensive discussion last month about the gate in 2009. And then last month, a number of neighbors who's gone to Upper Winding Way objected to the gate as being across the public right-of-way and being a taking of our property rights to use a 100-year-old public right-of-way. We were not parties to the settlement agreement, and we were not consulted about its results. And we think that it's a mitigation measure which was put on a third party, namely us, in order to counteract for the applicant's new homes, which seems odd. I mean, you couldn't cut trees down for a new project and then obligate neighbors to keep trees on their property in order to balance it. So the other terms of the agreement, I think, are pretty reasonable, but that one seems to be odd in that obligates a third party in order to mitigate aspects of this project. There's some discussion about having access to that gate for emergency or other purposes for residents of Upper Winding Way. One resident suggested even funding an automatic gate that could be key card controlled. And staff gave some advice that that should not be considered at this time in order to prevent going into the terms of settlement agreement. My observation is that I think the terms of settlement agreement have been fulfilled, given the proposal. It does not obligate the outcome of what happens to that gate or any other design aspects of this project once they've been developed and in practice over time. The city does not have an ongoing liability.
So I wanted, since we have the city attorney here, I wanted to have that question answered because that's actually come up on different projects. And my question is, is once something has been conditioned and built and as per the conditions in the project, short of coming back to the planning commission or whatever the approving body is, they can't just change it, right? It still has to come through a normal planning commission or RDRC process. It's not just, people can't just say, okay, it passes inspection, now I can change it the way I want to, right? I mean, there's no...
Well, the settlement agreement is a valid and binding agreement that the city agreed to, the developer agreed to. And I think the, there's two issues that I see is, one is, this is the grading and dirt hall permit tonight. It's not the entire project. Last meeting, I was just looking at what was approved. And I mean, there was quite a bit of actions taken by the commission for a master development plan and other matters that really address the width of the road and some of these issues that are being brought up tonight. What is relevant tonight is the grading and the proposed grading. And, but I don't think that the grading, the amount of grading is not the issue. It's where the grading is going is what's before you tonight. So, you know, that's why there's a no net off-site hauling. What's kind of an interesting thing about this permit tonight is that the hauling really that's going off-site is just the debris removal that's part of the project to generate the road that you've already approved. So it's really a, I think it's sort of beyond the scope, except to the extent that you can identify something about the grading that is a problem. But the settlement agreement kind of constrains us, with all due respect to the resident, my read of the settlement agreement is it specified the width of the road. It specified the width of the path. And it was recognized at the time that there was limited space to accommodate what's there. And then also the overlay of the public safety aspects that we spent so much time on last meeting is this is the width of the road that the fire department is requiring. 18 feet is the minimum width. So it's 18 feet. The fire department even required that the pathway be able to accommodate the weight of the fire vehicles because, so that has to even be compressed to the standard so that they can drive their vehicles on that because the actual width that we need is 20. But, so there's a compromise here. The settlement agreement requires 18 foot plus a path. So that's what's happening here. So I really don't think that tonight's grading and dirt hall deals with that issue. The grading and dirt hall deals with where's the dirt going? How's it going off-site? And it's the actual plan that you're approving tonight, this grading and dirt hall plan.
You always reel me back in. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get those questions answered. So, okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fedor. Next speaker, Ms. Diane Ray.
Hi, my name is Diane Ray. I live on Chesham Avenue. And, you know, I basically, like many people on Chesham Avenue, agree with and support what Sandy said. One thing I was thinking of is that when this property was annexed in 2009, three members of the city council voted to an exit, and two members of the city council voted not to an exit. And what that told us at the time was that they were concerned about maintaining the natural environment that adjoins the city of San Carlos. It could not have been developed while it was still in the county, so not annexing it effectively would be preserving it. And it was, you know, a pretty split council. And I think the opportunity that you all have is to do what you can to preserve the quality of that land. And I don't want to take a lot of time on this tonight. I don't, effectively what's happening is concrete is going to be dumped into the creek to build a road over it. And there is, there are regulates. It is an alluvial fan that is part of the creek. And declaring it not the creek certainly makes less expensive construction. Building a bridge would be much more expensive. But that doesn't change the fact that it is the creek. My, and it concerns me to hear that there's 25 trucks with vegetation leaving the area. That's a lot of, not all vegetation. Some of it is the existing retaining walls. But that's a lot of vegetation. That's a lot of the natural habitat that's going to be changed. And what we would like to see is that this doesn't, is that it maintains the quality of the land that the city of San Carlos, within the last 10 or 15 years, was concerned about preserving. My safety concern, I want to thank you all again for changing the path so that the trucks would not be coming down Torino directed at that house. That clearly was dangerous. I'm just puzzled. I believe I've heard two different things. So perhaps Jeff and the developer can straighten this out for me. From my email from Jeff, and perhaps I misunderstood, it sounded like they are going to be parking in the curve of Chesham Avenue. And from what you're saying, it sounds like there'll be no parking at all on the road. And the reason I'm concerned about that, actually, I tried to draw this because we're, I don't know if it'll be helpful, but this is what the curve looks like. It is a bulb. It goes like this. And right now, if you park over here, effectively, you're going to turn the curve into a very narrow 90-degree turn where we can't see around the corner. That's one reason this is so wide like this, so that when people go around the corner, they'll be able to see each other. They'll be able to swing wide. Parking there seems, no, it doesn't seem. It is very dangerous. And I'm wondering if I misunderstood, is there going to be a restriction against any parking at all on Chesham Avenue? Because this is the entrance into the site. This is the entrance into the site. If they park, that's where they would park. And it's the only place they could park that would not completely block traffic from passing on Chesham Avenue. So I would appreciate it if I, maybe you all are clear, but I'm not, if you could clarify, someone could clarify whether there'll be any parking at all in that curve on Chesham Avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Chilcott, could you explain it again?
I just wanted to find the bullet point, and I'll just reread that one phrase so we're consistent. Again, I said there will be no parking on city streets. That should be obvious. Depending on the phase of construction, I'm just trying to be 100% honest with everyone here. You know, sometimes construction, you know, depending on the phase, it's just more productive to have perhaps a couple cars off the actual job site, which is above the cyclone fence. So depending on the phase of construction, there may be brief periods of time where limited parking at the lower entrance of the project, just off Chesham would be utilized. So not on Chesham, just off Chesham. And that's at the entrance to the project. Again, just trying to be honest. The goal is never to even do that, but it's not on the asphalt at Chesham. Okay?
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Just a question to staff. So the applicant has stated the parking will be, I guess, now like 99% on-site. Is there a condition to that? Or it's just the applicant stating that is what we're talking about?
Yes. That was recommended addition to Condition 9 at the bottom, that construction vehicles and equipment will not be allowed to be parked or stored on Chesham Avenue except at the project site entrance where Winding Way intersects with Chesham.
I see. So what I'm looking at here are the conditions prior to this meeting, and you're wanting to add this to that. Got it. Okay.
Correct.
That explains why I couldn't find it. Okay.
Thank you. We'll move along then and have our last speaker, Ms. Debbie Freeman.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Freeman. I live at 203 Chesham. I've been there over 22 years. I am the house that is closest to this area where the bulb is everybody's talking about. So a couple things. There's a dirt road off the cement. Right now, every day, there's two or three cars that already pull in there and park off the road. My house is closest to that road. There's already two or three cars that park in the cul-de-sac every day. My son being one of them, we park there every day. So if I understand what Ron was saying, is they're going to be parking on the dirt portion, not on the street, for the most part. And they're going to be parking on the road they're building past the gate. So that's exactly where my house is. So that's my understanding. The thing that I wanted to really talk about, though, is my husband and I thought that they would be hauling for 30 days. And we estimated it to be one truck per day hauling stuff out. Tonight we heard it's two and a half trucks per week for 10 weeks. I work from home, and I look right at the street where the hauling would be. There are more gardeners, FedEx, UPS trucks that make a heck of a lot more noise and traffic than one truck a day or two and a half per week. So I do not think that is an issue at all. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any more questions from the commission to the staff or the applicant? Can anyone point out any issues that we haven't discussed or concerned about?
I would like the photographic evidence to be taken before all of the, before the project starts. I'd like that to be part of the conditions or added to the conditions.
I'm sorry. You're just looking to record current state?
Yeah.
And guarding against just them hauling And guarding against just them hauling dirt away that they said they weren't going to haul away?
But the road itself is damaged. It has to be repaired.
Oh, I see. So existing county-city roads, okay. So not just the project site, like the entire haul route?
No, I mean, I don't think the entire haul route, but definitely up by Winding Way and Chesum. Those are the ones I'm most concerned about. I don't think we need the whole entire thing, but.
Through the chair, I think that if we're closed with public comment before you deliberate, I think usually what happens is we close the public hearing, and then you move on to deliberation and discussion of the different conditions or changes you'd like to make.
I'll move that we close the public hearing. A second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Are we in discussion now?
Yes.
I like the addition about not allowing cars to be, or truck vehicles to be parked on Chesum Avenue. Except the way that this is worded, you could read that as they're allowed to park on Chesum Avenue at the project site entrance. And so if it were more clarified that the vehicles had to be off the paved road or something that might prevent a circumstance where they start to push the boundaries there.
Staff can read with that, right?
Perhaps. Just at least my non-legal reading of that made me wonder that somebody could interpret that as you could park on the road at that location.
Just if, I think, in my opinion, that'd be clarifying for the condition. So if, when it comes up for an actual vote, if that's the consensus of the commission, just make sure you, into the record, say that you would like to be sure that the addition to condition number nine includes no parking on the paved portion of Chesum.
Yeah, based on the applicant's statements in that regard, I would support that.
I'd like to see the map. So when we do get to the point where we're coming up with conditions, I can, I know what parts of the roads I'd be interested in having photographed because obviously I don't know, obviously not all of Winding Way, not all of Chesum, but I want to, can someone pull up a map so I can look at it?
I'm doing it on my phone now, actually.
So point out the route with the pointer so we can figure out where, where I think is.
The actual dirt haul route?
The right around, so Winding Way, the far right's the corner we're talking about, right? And they're going to be coming from that point, that tip on the right?
On the left, where it intersects with Chesum.
Okay, right there, okay. All right, so they're going to be going on Chesum, right there, and then down Chesum?
Yeah, to the right, exactly.
Okay, and then where does it connect to after Chesum?
I would say where it hits Devonshire is probably the endpoint of where you'd want to film.
Okay, all right, thank you for the help.
See nothing else? Do I hear a motion?
Can you, someone pull the motion up, please?
One last question. Are these the only additions to the conditions?
No, there's a whole list inside the packet of conditions.
No, I'm looking at the conditions, but this page is the only changes to the list I have here.
Correct. Seven and 11 have already been done, and that's already incorporated in the version you have?
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. So only, okay. I just want to make sure there wasn't another slide with more of those. Okay.
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a grading and dirt haul certificate for the construction of a portion of the Winding Way Road connecting to Chesum Avenue adjacent to Assessor Parcel Number 049-020-010 and 049-141-660, 670, 680, and 690, and terminating at the city limits with the addition of the condition to document the road conditions from the project site from Chesum down to Devonshire and, what did you want?
No parking on the paved portion of Chesum Avenue.
And clarification on the language of making sure that there is no parking on any paved area of Chesum Avenue. Is that good?
Yes.
In addition to the proposed language that's on the screen right now, the.
In addition to, yeah, in addition to the grading and dirt haul certificate revisions that are on the screen, condition seven and 11, and addition to condition nine.
And seven, 11 have already been incorporated.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Dugan?
Approved.
Commissioner Roof?
Approve.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Moving ahead, the next case is at 575 Prospect Street. Thank you all for coming.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Davis. I'm a contract senior planner with the city. Tonight, we'll be presenting a project for you at 575 Prospect Street. The application is for a new three-unit townhouse development. Four actions before the commission tonight that the project is requesting entitlements for, first being design review for the building itself, second being a tentative parcel map for the creation of those units as condominiums, third being a conditional use permit to allow for a parking reduction on-site, and last being a waiver from a development standard to allow for a reduced driveway width. It's an overview of the site at Prospect Street itself. The project site contains a two-story duplex building that's situated in the very rear of the parcel. The parcel itself is a little less than 5,500 square feet. You can see on the map here that it is elongated and rectangular in shape. In the existing neighborhood, the parcel is immediately surrounded by office commercial uses to the south along San Carlos Avenue. Multifamily buildings on either sides of it. In the larger, greater neighborhood, there are single-family homes to the north of the project site. I think some of the commissioners were here a few months back when a parcel, I think about three parcels up from this site to the north was approved for a new five-unit townhouse development.
Real quick, I see that we're zoned medium density here. Can you just give the commission a quick overview of how that is defined in our zoning?
Sure. I'm going to actually go to the next slide with that. So the parcel has both a general plan land use designation as well as zoning designation that allows for multifamily uses at a medium density. What that density means is it allows for a certain amount of units based on its parcel size. So for this particular parcel size, at slightly less than 5,500 square feet, I believe it has an allowable density of up to, let me just check my report. 7.4 units is what the maximum allowable would be under the standard zoning application. And as I mentioned, this project is proposing three units, three units for the site. So this colored map up here, just a quick overview. The subject site outlined in red. All of the parcels that are also shaded in orange have that same multifamily medium-density designation. Those parcels in pink, that's to the south, fronting along San Carlos Avenue, those have mixed-use land use designations. What that means is those parcels could have both office, commercial, and residential uses. And then the parcels to the corner of the map there that are shaded in yellow, those are parcels in the neighborhood that are zoned for single-family residential. I'm going to just briefly walk you through the floor plans of this building and put it into the context that it will lead into for the actual elevations of the site. So this is the basement or subterranean ground floor of the proposal. Contains two attached carport spaces for each of the unit. You can see those outlined there, kind of in the meshed color there. It also contains the storage, private storage for each of the units, a separate private entrance to each unit, and stairs that lead up to the main living area. So moving up to the ground floor, you can see Prospect Street there to the left, so that's the front of the parcel, and then, of course, working your way back to the rear. So at the ground floor is the primary entrance for each of the units along the left-hand side. Can I borrow the mouse? Or? See if it works. No. But if you're looking at the top of this picture here, the building will be accessed by its residents via a shared covered walkway along the left or north side of the property. And so the primary living areas are contained on this floor. Moving up a level to the second floor plan, you have the bedrooms for each of the three units. And then up to the third floor or the uppermost level, there's some more ancillary living space as well as the private roof decks for each units. And those roof decks are facing towards San Carlos Avenue. Those will be better illustrated as we move on into the actual elevations. So just a bit about code compliance for the site. As described in the staff report, the project does comply with all of the minimum development standards, just setbacks, floor area, lot coverage, et cetera, as required by the city zoning ordinance. The building has an overall floor area ratio or square footage of 1.4, whereas 2.0 is a maximum that otherwise would be allowed by the zoning code. The building height does vary. You can see from this isometric drawing here, there's a slight downslope for this property, starting at Prospect and sloping down towards the rear of the site. So that allows for the building height to be somewhat staggered in height from Prospect, again, leaning down towards the rear of the parcel. The maximum allowable building height for this, for a parcel of this zoning district is 50 feet. The height, again, as I mentioned, does vary in height between 33 to a maximum of slightly around 40 feet. So here you have the front elevation as well as the left or the north side of the building. That is displayed here on the isometric rendering to the left of the screen here. So the building itself, it lends itself to more of a modern or contemporary-style architecture. The flat roof approach is consistent with the immediately adjacent buildings, office buildings along San Carlos Avenue, as well as the residential building immediately to the left of the site. The exterior of the building is a mix of high-quality materials, primarily based of an off-white cement board, which will be integrated with the horizontal wood paneling that you can see here primarily on the third level, most clearly shown, as well as some of the fencing at the street level there along Prospect Street. That shared covered walkway that I mentioned previously, you can see that also on the elevation drawing there, is to be constructed with a perforated metal grate, crate, to create that walkway. I have the actual color samples that I can put up at the dice if the commission is interested. So moving to the other two sides of the building, specifically the rear of the building and the right or the south side. Again, the right or the south side is where vehicles will enter the site to access those private two-car covered carports at the basement level. The windows throughout the building, not just here on the right and the rear, but throughout, are to be framed in an anodized bronze finish and to be recessed three inches in from the building face, slightly exceeding the city's minimum two-inch recess requirement. Up at the third level, those private balconies that I previously mentioned, those are to be framed in a frame, excuse me, frameless glass. And again, those are the balconies that are facing towards San Carlos Avenue.
What is the cheese grater material going to be used for?
So that is, going back here, the shared covered walkway that the residents will use to enter at the street level to each of their units.
And that's kind of on their lot line, shielding their walkway?
It's on the setback line. So there is some distance between that cheese grater material and the actual property line.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that blocking, is that blocking the vehicles? Or is that, is that the other side?
This is the opposite side. So the vehicles are on the right side. The perforated metal walkway here is on the left side of the building, if we're standing in front of the building at Prospect Street.
And this is like around the windows?
Yes. And also, in this rendering here, you can see at the third floor that darker, yes. Moving into the proposed landscaping for the site. The landscaping is proposed up both the front, rear, and left-side yards. At the basement level where those garages were, you can see, excuse me, if you're looking at the top of that floor plan, they have proposed landscape light wells at the basement, so that will allow for some trees to grow up to help screen that perforated metal walkway that I showed in the previous slide, as well as to create some kind of green buffer between the property, existing property there on the left side. At both the front and the rear yard, you'll see the green shaded there. Those are landscaped areas to serve primarily as shared, common, open space for the residents of the building. There is an existing protected redwood tree that is not on the project site, but is located, if you're standing again, at Prospect Street, to the property to the rear left of the site. As detailed in the staff report, the project applicant did secure a certified arborist report to evaluate that tree and its context of the proposed development, and put forth a series of specific protection measures to assure preservation of that tree throughout construction. The amount of work in that back corner is really limited to landscaping and fence work. However, those recommendation measures would need to be met prior to, and be incorporated into prior to any development permit being issued. So moving on to the second requested entitlement, which is a conditional use permit to accommodate a request of a parking reduction for the site. So backing up to what the parking requirements are for the building, each three-bedroom unit requires two spaces, equating, of course, to a total of six spaces. The overall development would require an additional two spaces to accommodate guest parking. So with eight technical parking spaces. accommodate guest parking. So with eight technical parking spaces being required, the proposal is providing six parking spaces, thus requesting a parking reduction of two spaces. So as required by the city's zoning ordinance, a parking study was completed by a traffic engineering firm to evaluate the feasibility of the project to meet its anticipated parking demand. The study does note the project's close proximity to different modes of public transportation, as well as the project's incorporation of onsite bicycle parking for each unit. The study further detailed the development's peak parking demand estimated using industry standards by the ITE or the Institute of Transportation, had found that the project, excuse me, would meet the parking demand approximately 85% of the time. Additionally, an onsite parking study was conducted to evaluate the amount of on-street parking spaces available at peak times along both Prospect Street and Cedar Street to the rear, in between San Carlos Avenue and Magnolia, so that immediate block, and found that there were 27 spaces available during a weekday evening period, 23 spaces available on a weekend evening. And of those, 13 just on Prospect Street and 14 respectively in those timeframes. So the third requested entitlement before you tonight is a waiver for reduced driveway width. The zoning ordinance requires driveway width with this many units to be 14 feet. The proposal is requesting a 10% reduction of that, that's 12 feet, 8 inches. You can see that highlighted there, excuse me, with the red arrow. That parking study that I was previously discussing also evaluated this component of the project and found that this width was to be effective to serve the needs of this specific development, given its location and anticipated number of residents and effectively low-traffic volumes that were anticipated to be both entering and exiting the site. The reduced driveway width was also further evaluated and substantiated by modeled turning movements. Those movements were included as attachments in your staff report. So it evaluated the feasibility of both a sedan-sized vehicle, as well as an SUV-sized vehicle, to get in and out, and is it feasible? And the study did conclude that it was. The fourth requested entitlement, as I mentioned before, a tentative parcel map to allow for those three units to be created into condominiums. 10 required findings that the commission needs to make, and as detailed in the staff report, the project is found to meet such findings. Standard conditions and requirements were incorporated into a draft approval certificate. Public outreach. So the applicant did conduct their own public outreach prior to the city's mailing of the notice for tonight's meeting. This began back in May of 2017. Initial neighborhood meeting for the project was conducted conjointly with that other project that I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, a few parcels up from this at 549 Prospect Street, in response to community, some of the community feedback that the applicants did receive at that meeting, combined with some comments also put forth by staff. The project that you see before you tonight did previously go through a series of iterations to address some of the concerns that had been expressed at that meeting. These revisions were also then updated on the projects, project applicant's website that they created, that gave not only the ability for members of the community to contact the project applicant with questions or concerns, but gave copies of the plans so that they were made publicly available before tonight's meeting as well.
Were we given any kind of summary of what those concerns were?
Yes, I was gonna jump into that, actually. So you were given a summary of those concerns that's included as an attachment within the staff report. It is, let's see, begins on packet page 131. And in summary, the concerns pertained primarily to privacy, potential view blockage, parking and traffic impacts both during construction and after the development would be completed, impacts to the tree that I had made mention of previously on the rear adjacent neighbor's property. Their most recent concerns submitted beyond those that I just previously mentioned included a lack of energy savings design elements incorporated into the building, as well as the ability of this type of development to adequately serve the needs of older adults. All of the public comments and concerns that were submitted to the project applicant were responded to by the project applicant, and those are in detail in the attachment that I just made mention of.
This included not just homeowners, but renters as well. This was the true neighborhood outreach, right? It wasn't just homeowners. There's rentals in that area, right?
Yes, residents. Residents of the actual units themselves, yes. So with that, if the commission decision is to make the required findings and issue approval of the project, we've put forth a suggested motion. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. I know that the project applicant and his team are here, and they have a brief presentation that they'd like to make as well.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, as far as the number of parking spaces that are being proposed, it mentions that it's close to transit, so that allows a two-to-space reduction. But how close, I mean, does it meet the zoning requirements for allowing that reduction?
Yes, typically, if, to support it, that the project would need to be within a quarter-mile walking distance of public transit, and this project is indeed within that buffer area.
And is that just Caltrans, or is that a bus stop as well?
There's a bus stop and the Caltrain station.
But bus stops are included in?
Yes.
In that? Okay.
Yes.
Any more questions of staff at this point?
At the very front of it, the area that looks like it's blocked off is the patio. Is that, is that a walk area? Is that flat? I can't tell what's, oh, there it is. It's actually a garden area. Is that like a common area?
So that would be a private, open space area for that unit?
That unit, okay.
Yes.
Don't buy the middle unit.
I have a question on the uphill side from, from San Carlos Avenue. The fence that's along the, the property line, how high is, is that proposed to be now?
Six feet, I believe, on top of a retaining wall. I need to double-check the plans to give you that definitive.
One of the concerns by the immediate neighbor. And that area where there's some kind of tall skinny trees in the drawing, is that a, is that a dirt?
So kind of where those tall, those tall skinny?
In between the, the cheese grater and the, and the fence, what's the surface? I like the, I like the cheese grater, by the way.
So there is landscaping, oh, in between the, okay, so those tall skinny trees as you're moving down towards the rear of the building, those are to be planted at the basement level where the two-car carports are. So this rendering is illustrating those along the back, kind of growing up from that point. So, yes.
On the, I'm gonna just say the, on the left-hand side, it's hard to tell, but it looks like there is some articulation in the white area. Or is that all one flat surface?
The articulation through the placement of fenestration or the windows, as well as the scribing in that cement, white cement board piece that I passed around.
So there is, it isn't just one, I mean, I understand the windows obviously are, they are just, but the white, the white area also, I mean, like you can see the seam there toward about halfway through. Is that actually an indentation?
An offset of the wall?
It's offset, or is it flat? Is it one, one plane?
Yeah, one plane.
Okay, is there any reason why you decided to do one plane on both sides of this? Because that makes it look like one big, huge rectangle, that just sort of towers out over the town.
I think that the project applicant is going to get into more of the thought process behind the design and the layout of the building.
On the wood, is this like a wood composite, the kind that lasts forever and ever amen? Or is this just the kind of wood that needs to be taken care of and has a lot of maintenance associated with it?
High-quality material, long-standing.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Mike Pittler with Workshop One, the project's architect, and I'm here tonight with Sean Gibson from Dragonfly, the project's owner, and Mark Spencer from W Trans, who is our transportation consultant. We're excited to be here tonight to show you our proposed project at 575 Prospect Street, and to walk you through the evolution of its design. As Stephanie mentioned, the project consists of three townhomes, each with three bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms, and open living spaces, perfect for San Carlos families. Each townhouse has three levels and contains two parking spaces and a basement level. Since our pre-op was filed in 2016, we've made an extensive effort to work with both planning staff and neighbors to refine the design and to address all concerns. In addition to a well-attended meeting with neighbors, we launched an informational website to keep our neighbors informed about the project's design, evolution, and timeline. And we've had ongoing correspondence with many of our neighbors, and that, again, is summarized in your packet. As with our, let me go to here. There we go. We've talked about the location. Am I supposed to aim this up? There we go. Okay. As with our recently approved four-unit project, it was, it was erroneously mentioned as five. It was a four-unit project, two parcels over to the north at 549 Prospect Street. We were approached by Dragonfly to help them understand this particular site as well, and how to best approach it, given its unique zoning and context. Unique in that, we're buffered by commercial uses to the south and a lot of multifamily residential buildings all around. And I'll show you that in the next slide. 575 Prospect is the first parcel in from San Carlos Avenue, and therefore, it's flanked by a house to its north or the left in the picture before you, and a commercial building to the south. This street view shows the existing two-story commercial building in the rear, which contains both residential and commercial uses. It's located toward the rear of the site and covers the entirety of the rear yard setback. Covering the rest of the site is a parking lot that serves residential and commercial tenants, residential, yeah, the residential and commercial tenants, as well as the commercial tenants' clients.
So that building is currently mixed use?
It is currently mixed use, in its, in its use. In its approved form back in, I think it's a 1950s vintage, it's designed as a residential duplex. I'm gonna give you a nod, Lisa, thank you. As seen on the city zoning map, our project literally is on the border where downtown San Carlos abuts lower-density residential uses. The RM59 zoning was established as a transitional zone between these two. There we go, okay. In this aerial view along San Carlos Avenue, it highlights the eclectic mix of building types and sizes, including commercial buildings, next slide please, shown in red, and multifamily residential buildings shown in blue, next slide please. Our project is sandwiched between these buildings. Next slide. Here's a rotated view of our site along Prospect Street, showing our existing building in yellow. With demolishing this building, our project would restore the rear yard setback and provide a use that's more complementary to a residential neighborhood. Next slide, please. The RM59's transitional zoning allows for a maximum-size development of an apartment building at 50 feet in height and eight dwelling units. Next slide, please. With our project, we took a different approach to better reflect the site's context. We're proposing to construct townhomes, which is a more compatible use than an apartment-style building, and by nature, they allow for a smaller project by not having shared features like a parking garage, lobby, mechanical rooms, elevators, and exit stairs. We're proposing less than half of the allowable density. Next slide, please. In response to our gently downsloping site, the townhouses step down as well. Additionally, the parking is tucked underneath in a basement level, so that the project's first level contains living spaces. These decisions help to reduce the project's overall massing. Next slide. And this section diagram helps to further illustrate this approach. The existing grade is shown with the dash line, and the project's street facade is two stories and 25 feet in height, and it steps up to 35 feet at the third level. Let's go to the next slide, please. As seen from the sidewalk, our project has been carefully crafted in coordination with planning staff and input from our neighbors, and has been through several design iterations as a result. In response to our immediate residential neighbor to the left, our townhomes have a south orientation, so that they face away from this neighbor. This includes most of the project's view windows, balconies, and the driveway, which are south-facing as well. To further reinforce a privacy buffer between this neighbor, we've included a finely perforated screen, the cheese grater material, along an open-air corridor, and it's flanked by a lush and tall landscape screen, which is the bamboo shown in the rendering. The perforation sample I gave you is an example of the color, but it's going to be much more finely perforated, so that it really reads as a screen. It allows air to come through and light, but provides a lot of privacy. Next slide, please. This is a view looking along the south facade with the roof decks up at the third level, and the view windows on the second level with the parking tucked underneath. Next slide, please. We took our design cues from some wonderful residential projects and are proposing to use natural wood and an integral color, smooth-finished cement panel. The wood is the same one that was approved recently for 549 Prospect Street, and it's an actual hardwood that gets heat-treated, making it impervious to weathering and rot. And so that, along with the integral color cement board, require low to no maintenance over their lifetime. Terms of landscape details, next slide, please. We've worked closely with our landscape architect to develop a palette of rich plantings and details to enhance the sidewalk experience, while helping create a more verdant and soft outlook for our neighbors. And as, as was just discussed, along the north side, we have provided five-foot-wide planters intermittently along the project side that would allow for a lush and kind of wispy bamboo-type plant from the front of the site all the way back. And that's, that's within the setback, but the building is five feet in.
A quick question.
Oh, sure.
The white portion with the X through it, what is that?
That's, that's, that's open down below to where the parking is, below grade.
Oh, so that's where the air and light goes into the parking?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. For the existing heritage redwood tree in our rear neighbor's property, our arborist has developed a tree protection plan, which has been peer-reviewed and approved by the city. The protection plan outlines the requirements for demolition and construction to limit the impact on this tree. This involves limiting compaction during demolition, doing a trunk-crown inspection, a root zone examination, and establishing a tree-protection zone. In addition to this, our landscape architect has provide, has worked closely with our arborist to provide light-impact, pervious paving, to limit and to limit compaction under all paved surfaces. Most importantly, though, we're removing a two-level building that's currently sitting right on top of, right at the base of the tree. So we're restoring a natural setback, or a setback that will be to the benefit of the tree. Sustainability, let's go to the next slide, please. Next slide. For sustainability, our project will include green building and other features not commonly seen in today's construction. In particular, most of the building's components are going to be fabricated off-site, using light-gauge steel framing, and are going to get delivered to the site as finished wall panels, inside and out. Assembling these on-site affords an approach that takes a significantly shorter time to build, and requires significantly fewer trips to and from the site and parking. For instance, For instance, we're gonna have fewer material delivers. Most materials are going to be delivered to the factory and assembled there, and most of the construction workers as well are gonna be working at the factory, not at the site. And we see this as a big benefit to our neighbors. This approach also creates much less construction noise and waste and allows for a higher-quality construction, in particular with the light-gauge steel framing, one that's resistant to fire, mold, and pests, and has increased durability. It doesn't shrink and have some of the issues that wood framing can have. Other features are electric car charging in the garages, zero-nut energy with solar panels on all the projects, a fully-electric project, no natural gas, which would allow them to generate their own power, home automation features to improve the home's efficiency and comfort, and healthy materials and finish to ensure high-quality indoor air, high indoor air quality, and worker and occupant health. Anyways, in conclusion, we hope that you agree that the proposed project helps to address the city's housing goals and climate action plan and balances the RM59's zoning allowances with the character of the existing neighborhood, and ultimately will contribute to both the beauty and the function of the city of San Carlos. And we look forward to addressing any of your questions.
So, in general, you know, I really appreciate the materials. I appreciate the articulation at the face, the front of the building. You know, we're seeing more and more of these, for lack of better words, prefabricated building designs, which tend to be boxy, and I have no problem with, like, modern, as long as there's enough articulation in it. And the thing that bothers me, that sticks out to me, is that on both sides, on your second story, it's a one-flat surface. And to me, that just sticks out like a sore thumb. Plus, you picked white, and I don't have a problem with white, but picking white on a flat surface in a tall building in this area, it's gonna stick out quite a bit. And maybe that's good for advertising, you know, but I don't see where that actually fits into the form and character of the neighborhood. So my question to you is, is there anything that you can do, either by actually physically manipulating the building design or by optical illusion, create more articulations on the sides?
It's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. The building's design has been through many, many iterations. At one point, it included an eight-unit apartment building. That was not under my purview. And then, once Workshop One took over, many iterations, working in particular with city staff, we've done dark colors, light colors, medium colors, grays, greens, other things. Our project at 549 Prospect has a kind of a medium-gray panel, and at the end of the day, this is what the city supported. And I agree, I like it too. I feel like white might show a certain way in a rendering, but it has a certain lightness once it's built, in my experience. It is all one plane, you're correct, and part of that is a limitation of the site. It's 42 feet wide, where the neighboring parcels are 50 feet wide, so when you look at the actual plans, they are, they're just not that wide. And on the second level, for instance, we have three bedrooms. They're not huge. They're not 15 by 15 bedrooms. I don't, the two kids' rooms aren't even 12 by 12. They're all sized appropriately, but not overly big, and so I made a decision to not bring in the sides for one of the units at the expense of the functionality of those spaces. Now that said, one thing that we do often do on projects, and it would be easy to incorporate, is a vertical niche or some actual break in the plane, and oftentimes, it can be as little as six inches wide.
It'd be much.
And a little bit deep, but it will give you that type of thing. And it hasn't been done on this, but it's something I do do on a lot of projects with the success that you're kind of pointing out, that it creates that illusion, if you will.
Yeah, that's really all I'm, that's all I'm really, all I want. I just don't like seeing one big, long, flat side, even just a small break with...
I understand that, and you know, something like that could easily occur at the adjoining wall of the two units, the party wall, where there's a natural stagger as well. And my hope was that the stagger itself did that, but to provide a vertical niche that has more dimension to it would be easy to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that the roof level goes down with the slope of the lot toward the rear and the big tree that you saved on the adjoining property is helpful. It's a vertical feature, of course, too, as this is. Perhaps if the, I'll call it stark whiteness, were toned down a bit, like the medical building next door that's seen in this rendering, it might soften it a bit. I'm sure you've probably already considered that.
Tried quite a few colors, but there's a lot of colors out there.
Very handsome design.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the architect? Can we move ahead?
I also applaud the design. I do think it is clean and fresh. I like the white, you know, you see a lot of beige out there, and it's nice to get something that speaks a bit. As far as that articulation, when I'm seeing the breaks in the cement board, how big are those as you envision it?
There, it's about a quarter-inch gap.
Okay.
And it's called a rainscreen. If you're not familiar with a rainscreen, it's where you take a siding panel and...
I think I've seen it between stucco. Is it similar to that?
Yeah, well, you know, stucco is a solid surface that then gets a metal joint to control where cracking happens, so they call them control joints. This is actually, you know, each panel is at maximum four by eight or four by 10 feet, but we cut them down to smaller sizes. And so your joint is literally an actual joint, open to about an inch behind, and the panels held off the surface of the building. And that's done for a few reasons. They call it a rainscreen because technically, rain can get back there, but it allows for breathing to happen, for moisture to escape, for air to pass through. It provides a much better insulative wall assembly, and it's what you're seeing on a lot of new projects. The hope was, with a product like this, is to avoid having to get up there in your nine-and-a-half with scaffolding and to chisel off the stucco and to fix things. And I could tell you from experience, I use this all the time. It's not uncommon for me to have to get up there at some point during construction, take a panel down, fix something, or inspect something, or modify something, and with this type of panel, you can do that quite easily. It also helps the lifespan of the product.
And do those panels get joined, or...
No, it's an open-air gap.
So we're not seeing anything more than four by eight? Like, I see some squares there that look bigger than that dimension.
So I say four by eight, but there's four by 12, there's four by 10, there can be even wider, and we have not selected the exact one. This is Equitone, there's many products out there, but at the end of the day, there is a dimensional limitation, and that's where we apply the joint lines.
Okay. The only, I guess I would say, concern I had, and I'm sure people better qualified than me have considered it, but could you just walk me through briefly? What I'm noticing is, my question is, it's like just fire evacuation. So I'm noticing the exit in the garage just seems rather close to where the exit on the first floor would be. I always think of fire safety as having two ways out of a building. These almost seem within 10 or 15 feet of each other, and just, if you could just briefly explain how that was considered and why it's approved like that, because I don't really see the windows being much use in evacuation either.
So during our planning application, we went through extensive plan review from the Redwood City Fire Department, who then outsources us to a WC3 that does our plan check. And they looked at the building type. In this case, it's type-three construction. The windows are not required to have access for egress. Buildings are each required to have, or the townhomes are each required to have one exit, and we even have to demonstrate the path of travel and the length of the path of travel from the furthest point on the third floor all the way down to the exit door. And it got more scrutinized at the planning level than most of my projects at the building permit level, in all fairness. The good thing is that it works. It's fully code-compliant. The Redwood City Fire Department and Inspector Harris are very comfortable with the design at this point, and we have made a lot of modifications based on their feedback in iterations that you're not seeing tonight.
And is that right? Townhomes can have just one way out? That seems extreme. And is that just based on they're built with no wood or something? I mean, I guess I don't understand that.
It's based on the height of the building. So this is three stories. At four stories, you would. And other considerations of how does a fire department approach buildings of certain heights and of certain construction types. At type-three, it's a higher resistance of construction, it's got an approved sprinkler system for each unit, and so they have a very high standard for fire safety, much more than a wood-framed, single-family house.
Okay. And Lisa, you, I mean, we're confident this has been fully approved by Redwood City Fire and all that?
Oh, yeah. We have all of the renditions that the applicant just may mention that have been routed to the fire department. The comments were made, provisions said were made in response, and the version that is being presented to you tonight has been conditionally approved by the fire department.
Okay.
And let's put this in perspective. After this, we go through a building permit process, and it's going to get looked at very carefully in terms of the exact construction of the walls, the wall assemblies, the fire sprinkler system and design, and it's gonna be a much more fine-grained level of detail that's going to look at it, then into the inspection of the project once it begins construction. Okay, thank you.
So this doesn't have TDM because it's only three units? And you did mention electric car charging and bike traction?
Yeah, we actually have dedicated bikes stored. You could see that be, toward the front of the cars, it says bikes, so two bikes could get stored in that area. It's got height, I mean, you could hang more bikes in there reasonably. It's a pretty good-sized space.
I'll have some questions about the parking survey and the parking situation. Should I hold those till after the public comment part, or is now the time?
The consultants here.
Now would be the time to ask about that?
After his presentation, yeah. Thank you. The applicant here, her owner, next, or the transportation consultant, whichever you prefer?
That's it for our presentation tonight?
Oh, I thought they were gonna speak too.
No, they're here in the event that we have questions that we wanna ask them.
Maybe this is my chance.
Yes.
I'll bring Mark up right now.
Thank you. Well, one of the things we're being asked is to approve a reduction from the eight, the eight to the six, and I understand that we'd be permitted to do that based on the location with regards to public transportation, but still considering the impact on the street and the neighborhood, I wanted a little more detail on the, first on the street parking. And it did a survey, what, that suggested there was quite a few open spaces, and what area does that, how far out does that survey go?
Certainly, I can speak to that, for the record and for reference. So my name is Mark Spencer. I'm a principal traffic engineer with W-Trans. We were asked on behalf of the applicant, under the city's direction, to look at parking, vehicle maneuverability, and, you know, transportation-related issues associated with the proposed project. Couple of things on the parking. Yes, the code allows for the reduction, and we looked at this and said, okay, what's, how much parking's actually needed? Forget the code for a second and everything else. How much parking do we actually anticipate for a project such as this with three-townhome style units? And as Lisa mentioned in her presentation, the standard reference for this is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. It's one of the industry-standard manuals. It tells us, here's the parking demand that you would anticipate for different types of land uses. And in this case, it actually shows a, what we call an 85th percentile demand, which means 85% of the time, parking for three units typically requires five spaces. There are times when it's gonna need more. Sometimes you're gonna have guests, you're gonna have, you know, weekend visitors, there could be a number of things. So as part of that, what the city of San Carlos requires is to go out and take a look at an on-street parking survey, sort of within a one-block area all around the project. And we did that, and that was mentioned in the presentation as well. And I wanna make sure we quote it exactly, so I have it in my report here. The area that that included, included Prospect and Cedar. So we said a number of spaces on Prospect and Cedar between Magnolia and San Carlos Avenue, so that's kind of the extent of what we looked at. We've done this for other similar projects, for other projects here in San Carlos, a sort of standard procedure. And we went out a couple of times. You look at a weeknight, it's a residential project, so residential parking peaks overnight when people are home, either on a weeknight or a weekend, so we actually look at both. In this case, it was actually in January of 2017 when we did this. And, you know, looking at how much parking is available, we look at how many spaces are on the street, and then how many are actually vacant during a typical, what we call a typical period. On a weekday, in the area, there were, you know, 27 vacant spots. This is not heavily utilized for on-street parking. It's because you have on, you have single-family residential, which has some driveways, it also has its own parking, so there's a fair amount of street parking that is available.
On one block or on all of Prospect?
In, both on Prospect and on Cedar, in the area that we looked at.
I mean, how many blocks, city blocks, are you talking about? Are you saying there's 27?
Between Prospect and, sorry, between Prospect and Cedar, that's on San Carlos Avenue itself. So there's basically a one-block radius all around the project in a number of different directions. Or looking at it another way, instead of distance, it's what's comfortably walkable from the project site itself. People don't wanna walk more than, you know, a block or two to get to their parking. Most people wanna park nearby to where they're looking. Probably most important, though, is on Prospect itself, right in the vicinity of the site, with on that block itself on either side of the street, we're looking at, you know, 13 or 14 spaces, whether it's a weeknight or a weekend. That's a fair number of available spaces. Should the project need that at some point for a guest or for whatever the purpose might be? There is ample on-street parking. We often get asked, well, is that a good thing or a bad thing? Well, on-street parking is that. It's publicly-available parking for whomever needs it, whether it's residences, businesses nearby on San Carlos and so forth. So in this case, we happen to have a pretty robust amount of parking available with not only the inventory, but also generally available. And so there's a high level of comfort that the project's gonna be pretty well, you know, safely parked without causing impact.
One potential concern is that people store their stuff in the parking area, in the parking spot, and then park out on the street. And I know that for the, for the project up the street at 549, there was a condition placed on the, on the project that the parking, the only, the parking spaces provided in the building be solely used for the purpose of parking, and I wonder if you would be amenable to having a similar condition for these parking spots?
Well, these are carports.
I think that's a CCNR, right? There's car...
And it's not, it's not an indoor space, to be clear.
Yes.
So to use it for something else would be less likely than at 549, but we would be happy to put that into the CCRs, that it's a space intended for parking. Adjacent to it, we have the bike storage, which is a nice-sized closet, separate trash areas, and then including an entry closet and an entry area as well for shoes, coats, and that kind of thing. So there is a lot of personal storage in addition to the cars, but we'd be fine doing that as well.
I'll bring that up again when we get to the right time. Another question. Right now, there's a single parking spot in front of this building. Will the new driveway and curb configuration allow that spot to still be there? It wasn't a very large one.
So there is, actually, take a look, the current site, which has the mixed-use building at the rear and then like sort of a parking lot in front of it, also has driveway access onto the street. So in terms of change in on-street spaces, I don't know that this actually results in a net loss of on-street space, or if it did, it would, probably wouldn't be more than one space, but we didn't look at that as having a loss of space.
Right now, there's a single with driveway and a spot for one car to park there.
Our driveway is 12 feet, eight inches wide, the curb cut. It's a 42-foot-wide lot, and the driveway's all the way to one side, and so in front of our parcel, there's room for one-plus spaces.
Oh, okay.
If you assume that a parallel parking space is 18, 20 feet.
Yeah, okay, good.
But a similar amount of on-street, yeah, there's no loss of on-street space.
We won't lose any street parking?
That's our understanding, and yes.
Narrow driveway.
One thing back to the architect or the owner, with the two projects, what is your optimum start date and finish date of both?
Great question. Next spring would be optimal to start. Construction typically for a project like this has been eight to 12 months, depending on the size of the project. These are a little more complicated in that they have the topography to deal with, more so on 549, which has more of a slope. With the prefabrication method, we look to take that time in roughly half, but we'll put more information together about that once we put in our building permit application to the city. A lot of that work's going to happen, so we'll be doing a foundation at the same time we're building walls, and then we can assemble. So the erection of the building happens very quickly, and that includes the finishes inside and out, and then connecting the walls inside. Plumbing gets pre-installed. A lot of it will get pre-installed out at the factory. And so it, it could be reduced even beyond half to less time.
So you envision, if you use the same subcontractors, they could work on one and then it goes right over to the other?
It's the same general and subs, like it's all, yeah, it's one, one of the same.
I know it's not required, but I got to tell you, I just don't buy the, I know you're an expert, but I don't buy that there's that many available parking spaces in that area. I also know that there's probably no way that you squeeze other parking spots in that area, in that, in the area you've been given. But is there a way that you can encourage, use the public transit by providing subsidized passes or something like that? Would you be willing to do that for X amount of time or whatever for, just, just to start to encourage people to use the public transportation? Because it is so crowded right now with, with parking downtown. And, and, I mean, if you go on our Nextdoor webpage, and you start reading what people have to say, I mean, it's complaints all the time about not, not enough parking, there's too, you know, there's too many people driving. And I know you're not required to, but are you willing to, to subsidize some passes for a while or something like that to help with the project?
We're often willing to do a lot of things on our Walnut Street project, which will come before the commission later this fall. We did a TDM, and we're doing measures like that.
Yeah.
And that's not new to San Carlos.
Right.
It's been, it's been done previously. The difference in those projects is that not every residential unit has two parking spaces. And on Walnut, you'll see that there is a one and a half to one, and we'll go through all that math at a later date. These are three-bedroom townhomes with a family. Two cars for parking is, in my experience, more than adequate. And what I typically find when dealing with these types of condos, and I've, I've built many of these for myself as a developer and have designed many as an architect, quite commonly, the folks that move in have one car. If they have two cars, they have two cars. If they have five cars, they're going to live somewhere else. Because parking three cars on the street is not their cup of tea. And if they want to go downtown to Laurel Street and have dinner, they're going to spend more time driving and parking than they are going to be walking two and a half blocks.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't, I don't think that we need to do anything to encourage it by location. That's the incentive, and that's why somebody would choose to live there.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to live there because it's in the middle of everything, whether it's an empty nester that decides to live there and have the extra bedrooms for grandkids and visits. It is the fact that it's right downtown that will incentivize everybody to walk. And if you're taking transit or if you're commuting up to San Francisco, you're not driving. You're going to get on Caltrans and take that north. And so I think by location, it's the incentive. I don't, I don't think that providing passes would change anything about the actual outcome.
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, my view is, you're talking about visitor parking, and I'm not sure passes would affect visitor behavior.
No, I'm just, and this comes up every time we have a project. And it's a problem every time we have a project. And for, now, for me, it's been five years we've been seeing these things come in front of us, and we have every, you know, these TDMs that we have yet to see whether or not they're going to work or not. It's, it's all conjecture. We don't have a lot of data that says that what we're proposing in these TDMs really works. So I'm concerned about reducing the spaces when we don't, and there's not even a TDM on this one, but, you know, we make all these assumptions and, and, you know, it's going to be another two years or so before we know if we've been correct or not, so it scares me.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the reason I bring it up, because we just don't have a lot of data. I know we have the ITE, but we don't have a lot of data for, for our area, whether the TDM measures and whether these reduction measures that are in our code are, are having the effect that we want them to have. And I'm just, you know, like I said, you're on Nextdoor, you read the complaints that people have, and it's no longer the city of good living because there's no place to park, and you can't get around anywhere. Just trying to protect, that's just me trying to protect.
Fair enough. On this parking study, that, that is a surprising result. How many different nights were surveyed?
I'm going to warn you, I could talk about parking like all night. This is what I do. But, but I promise I won't.
I'm sure everyone's very critical of you. You're probably one of the most scrutinized people.
Yeah, next door, I'll tell you that. Okay, so first to answer your question, there were two nights. One was a weeknight and one was a Saturday night.
So each of these results is a single data point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and they, and we typically wanted to do a typical condition, no special events going on, and, you know, and these are overnight numbers. So this is residential. When you hear complaints about parking, parking takes on two forms. One is the anecdotal, how do I feel? I can't find a parking space. I'm going downtown, I want to have dinner, I can't find a space, I'm circling around, oh, forget it, I'm going to go somewhere else. That's how people feel, that's what their experience is. And often, that's an experience when they're coming for something during the day, or they want to go to lunch, they want to go to dinner. It's not 10:00, 11:00 at night, it's not overnight. And the numbers that we're representing here are the overnight condition, because that's when, frankly, when residential parking needs it the most. Now, the condition when a guest comes by or a guest comes by and wants to have dinner, that's obviously at a different time of day. As the applicant said, the project's to a large extent self-regulating. Someone who's going to want to live here, it's because they're five blocks from Caltrans, there's a lot of, you know, transit accessibility, it's already walkable. The fact that they have two parking spaces, they're going to understand that. And, yeah, occasionally, like anybody else, they're going to need guest parking. The actual parking demand, though, the gap outside of the conjecture, what people are saying on Nextdoor, this is what I'm seeing, I'm feeling this or whatever, is often very different. When we go out and measure it, even during the day or at different times throughout the year, we often find where those gaps are and where there's accessibility. We are feeling it more in downtown San Carlos. It's good and it's bad. It's bad because we're hearing about it, and people are saying, well, I have to, I want to drive five blocks from my house, and I want to go repark my same car and get closer to go out to dinner, or I'm coming from somewhere else or I'm visiting people. You're a victim of your own success. Downtown's doing better and better. And you're seeing that, we're seeing that here in San Carlos, we're seeing that in many communities on the peninsula and elsewhere. And I don't know that that's going to change, but that's not necessarily to be considered a bad thing. That's why, you know, parking is often a symptom of something that's also going well as well as people's frustration. So there is different ways to look at it. I'm not saying it's all good.
Yeah.
People's frustrations are real. And you have to think about it.
So you've recorded one night. How many, so just to say, I think weekday is probably a bigger concern. You've recorded one night. How many other times did you drive by and check it out besides the one night you duly recorded?
Right. In this particular case, we probably have about half a dozen observations. When we first started the project, we usually come and we check it out at different times. We actually have staff who live on the peninsula, so it's easy for me to send somebody over and say, hey, go take a look at this on Friday night or Saturday night, tell me what's going on. Then we actually schedule the survey day itself. The fact that we were working on probably four or five different projects in the area at the same time also helps because we're constantly coming back and doing surveys on a block or two away. We've done projects on Elm, we've did the other project on Prospect, and so on. So we're, we've been by a few times, and we haven't seen a whole lot of change in that, that overnight and that residential peak condition. We are seeing changes in the middle of the day. It's harder for us to come by and have lunch in the middle of the day, but we still do it.
Yeah.
And it means a block, you know, if I'm parking a block or two further than I was previously, sometimes, sometimes not, that, that's okay. People get used to that, and that settles into a kind of a pattern. It's just not what people have experienced in the past, so they react to that, and then they vent on Nextdoor. And they vented us for telling them that. But it's, that's, that's how we do see it professionally.
Okay.
I'm not so overly concerned about this because it is on the far edge of downtown, but it would be a great place, and you've already provided for bicycle storage for people to ride a bike to downtown or anywhere else, at least in the, the flat area of our, of our great city here.
Yeah, there's a couple of those TDM elements without actually requiring the formal TDM plan, but there are things built into the project that we call out in our report as similar to what you would require in a TDM plan. That proximity to transit, the bicycle parking, you know, pedestrian amenities and so forth. So that's.
Yeah, this is good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any more questions of the applicants? Well, we'll open for public comment. And the first speaker tonight is Astap Korkuna. I hope I didn't brutalize your name, sir.
Good, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Astap Korkuna. I live, and together with my wife here, Daria, we live in 578 Cedar Street, which is northeast from the proposed property development. We are actually a lot where the protected tree is located. So my major concern was definitely the protection of the tree. It's a highlight of the property in the neighborhood. I really appreciate the developer taking the necessary measure, measures to protect the tree. I am a little worried because the current wall is nearly 20-inch away from the tree trunk, so it's really close, but I trust that the arborist did the correct analysis and the tree will not be damaged. So I appreciate work being done there. And my second concern was the privacy, because basically, our backyard and our bedroom windows face the backyard on that property where the second and third floor windows will, will be facing supposedly. It's a little hard, I, I actually raise these concerns online, I appreciate the response there. It's a little hard for me to, like, understand where exactly the, the windows, what exactly that will be visible from those windows, because the building will have greater setback, so I cannot estimate that based on the current building on the property. So, yeah, I'm still a little bit of concerned on the privacy side. So, yeah, that's, that's a concern I wanted to voice. But honestly, it's very hard for me to evaluate how much of the privacy intrusion this project will be. So I cannot quite, like, vote pro or against it, that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Could one of the applicants clarify? The architect best probably on where those windows are at the back and the side that might infringe on his privacy? There we go.
Ron, hang on. Let's go back to the landscape plan for a minute. The, the rear unit, as well as all the units, have a majority of their focus south-facing to the benefit of good natural light and for the benefit of the neighbors, in particular to the north. But there's a big focus, you could see here, it's a corner window looking out toward the corner. Along the fence line, the fence is proposed at six feet in height, is a hedge element. And I'm happy to have Dylan look up in the landscape plans to tell, tell you what species that is. But the idea is to, to build up a nice, beautiful, green verdant wall for privacy there and orient a lot of the windows south-facing. In this case, you could see there's a sliding glass door that is facing the rear yard neighbor, then a deck. It's a shallow deck, it's not intended as a usable deck, it's a stoop. And then some steps, some steps down into the rear yard, which is a grate, okay? We intentionally didn't put a deck up at the living room facing that direction. And like I said, with the orientation of the windows, there's also an existing canopy from the tree that blocks quite a bit of, blocks quite a bit of the views out. And I don't have an exact section or elevation of where, how big the canopy is at different heights, but it exists.
How high is the lowest branch on that tree?
I couldn't tell you. I just, I've had, well, without trespassing, I've, I have limited access back there. I can look in the arborist's report and see if they talk about it. I mean, we have a, we have a tree, a 20-foot tall, maybe an 18-foot-tall building right up against that corner, but I, I couldn't tell you where it's at around its periphery.
Okay. It has to be substantial.
It's, it's a huge tree. In fact, we could, if you want to back up to the street view in our, in our presentation, I have a street view where we could see the tree beyond. It'd be like, maybe slide four, we can try that.
I wasn't clear if Mr. Korkuna's property was back-to-back or staggered.
If you don't mind, Lisa, go, go forward a couple, the three, right there. So you can see the tree in the back corner of the yellow volume, and adjacent to it or to the right of it is the multifamily apartment building behind us. And again, the, the exact condition of the rear wall of that building, its exact distance to the property line, the windows and the rooms that face onto it, I don't have a survey of, of some of those details.
Other than the tree back there, is there, are, is there any other landscaping that creates any kind of blockage?
Absolutely, yeah. So let's go back to our landscape plan. So in the, from the property line in, we have the, the fence, a hedge.
I just didn't know if those actually came over the fence or not.
It's a, it's a podocarpus, which is often used as an ornamental hedge. It's bushy, kind of bamboo-like. It can actually grow into 50-foot-high trees, but they get pruned to be, the ones that I've had in my, my yard are about 12 feet high. They're beautiful and thick, about three feet thick. So that's a podocarpus hedge. There's a tree in the other corner. Typically, what we do, and, and this hasn't come up at all in our outreach, but what we do on, like Laurel Street, we worked with literally every neighbor that we are bordered with to develop the exact plants that we want to use. And at the time that we go to plant them, we're going to talk to them, say, these are what's available at the nursery. Let's pick things that we both like. And if a neighbor wants to throw a tree on their side of the fence line, we'll run a, an irrigation line to it to make sure that it takes off. And so that's the approach that I always take with landscaping. Laurel neighbors know that, it just hasn't come up on this project, probably because of the multifamily buildings and, and the occupant by renters rather than owners.
An unrelated question, but like, you're forgetting to ask it, I want to make sure I don't forget to ask it. As far as, you know, when you're coming out of the driveway, is there a way, like to put up mirrors or some kind of notification or some, some way to make it safe to come out of the driveway so we're not hitting pedestrians? Is there, is there any kind of safety measure?
We did, yeah. So the designs, the landscape design's been revised to pull the fence back and to provide a, like a buffer clearance.
Okay.
As, as is required by code. And so that was changed from earlier iterations to the current one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the demolition of the current building, which is right next to that redwood tree. Is there a foundation that goes down and they'll have to be excavating to remove this foundation?
No, it's a slab on grade, so at most, at most, it would have a, maybe a one-foot-deep perimeter footing. Again, 1950s construction, I wouldn't be surprised if it's four inches deep throughout, and it would get plucked out of place, but no, no digging to do that. And this is not the kind of demolition with, with dynamite or even an excavator knocking it down. It's, it's the kind of demolition, demolition that necessitates a more careful approach to really dismantling it carefully because of it being on the property line.
Thank you. And next speaker, Robert Stein.
Hi, I'm Robert Stein. I live at 565 Prospect, which is right next to the property. And they live behind me. The concern that I have, well, partially is, like you said, is the 125-foot redwood tree that's in the back. Regardless of what is said, if they're going to do any sort of grading, they're going to do some damage to the root structure that goes into that property. And if that tree is weakened or if something happens where you have a storm or something and that tree goes down, these people are going to have massive lawsuits from here to hell because if that tree goes, it's so big and potentially so dangerous when you're disturbing it with all this construction. I don't care what anybody says, I live there. There's real problems right there. The other thing that is not addressed is on our property line there, there's a 25-by-25 foot block wall that runs this way, runs each way around the property. When they start knocking the block walls down, there's not going to be any sort of fencing or anything. It's going to be open on all three sides. So what are they going to do about that? The other thing, there's just going to be a total lack of privacy from all the windows here. They show these little plants where I don't know where they're putting them at here or even in front where they show these trees on my property, which there's nothing there. And also, nobody even takes into account the fence that I have because they have this fence that is falling apart on the other side. I had to put in my own fence because, well, it wasn't them, I couldn't deal with the other people that owned the property before them. As far as parking, I don't know where this guy gets any idea that there's any parking in that area. What happens every night, you can ask anybody who lives there, there's at least four Xfinity trucks that park on Prospect Street there every night because they live on Second War. The street above it, they don't have a parking there. They put all their trucks on our street. And there's people there that you can't find parking during the day because they have dignity health there. The medical center on the corner, which has a very little small parking lot, so people are always parked there. So to think that there's 27 parking spaces is just some sort of fairy tale out of, I don't know where it comes from. So you have to consider that the parking isn't there, but if they have six parking spaces, fine. But I haven't heard anybody say anything about what are they going to do with all the block wall once they knock all that down? Plus, there's like four huge, I don't know what kind of tree those are. They're huge trees that are on the property. What are they going to do with those trees? Not the one in the back, which they can't touch because they own it over here, but the ones that are on the property. You got four like hedge trees that are 30 feet high that are there that nobody's talking about. So you have an issue with the fences here or lack of fences once they knocked down the block walls. You talk about the construction, but they're going to do something, everything prefab, which is very cheap. There's no quality of workmanship there. This is what happened on the project over next to the senior center where they say, well, gee, we want to do it in steel here and we want to put it up fast. But it doesn't mean, it doesn't make it look good. There's no quality of the work. And for what they're going to charge for the condos or townhouses, you would think they'd put more quality into the design, the drawing, or, like you said, it looks like a box. And it shouldn't look like a square box here, and that's what it is. And I've lived there for 21 years and, you know, you look at it and you say, you know, we really should deserve better than this. I'm not against the project, but I mean, you just can't say, well, you know, everything is okay because nobody's talked about any of this stuff. Anyway, that's what I have to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's what we're here for tonight. I think the architect could best respond to some of his concerns.
Yeah, I don't know where to respond because we've done the due diligence, we've done the research, we've done the traffic study by a licensed professional, and the neighbor has a different opinion. And frankly, if I lived next door to a construction site, I would have my concerns and fears. It's hard to respond to a concern and fear that's not based in the reality of the project that I proposed.
Can you speak to the plants though and the wall that's coming down? I think the privacy issues. I understand the parking, there's probably not going to ever be agreement on, but what about that?
There'd be, and we're never all going to agree on aesthetics and to one person, what's boxy and modern and ugly to another person is wonderful and beautiful. During construction, we'll be erecting per code a privacy fence and at the correct time that suits the construction. It could be early on, it could be later on. We're going to put up a nice fence on our side of the property line.
Permanent?
Of course, of course. I've never installed a fence on any property line on any project without working with the neighbor as to what's the exact detail, what's happening to your fence, so on and so forth. Fine, I won't install my fence, we'll keep your fence, we'll stabilize it. There's always, always a dialogue. And with the exception of this particular neighbor, I've been approached by every neighbor in San Carlos and all the other projects to start to vet these things during the planning phase, things that I often deal with as we get into construction. I answer every phone call, I answer every email. You'll see that in the outreach. And we work with our neighbors as is desired to make sure that everybody is left with a condition, in my opinion, that's better than what they currently have. So if they currently have an old CMU wall or a dilapidated fence, let's do better than that. Let's put in something that just has a nicer look to it.
The, those, I think those four large hedges, are those coming out?
Those are coming out, yes. Yeah, and that's outlined in the package before you.
Okay. And the picture you showed me that showed all those plants going in, I'm not sure if that's the same corner or not.
No, so the corner you're looking at with the four trees are right up against the medical office building on the other side of the property up at the street. The privacy hedge, the privacy hedges that we're looking at are along the property to the north, the residential neighbor, and the four, the multi-unit building to the east.
Okay, so there'll be fences on three of the four sides, obviously, right? And then there'll be landscaping on all of those fences.
There's fences on all four sides, to be honest. There's a low fence in the front yard. And Commissioner Bergman, you've seen, you've seen me here now with two previous projects. And I'll say this time and time again, privacy is a two-way street. I don't, I don't create townhomes for some person to stand up there and spy on their neighbors.
Yeah, but you know, we have a concerned neighbor. I'm trying to, I'm trying, and I know we're repeating some things here, but I want to, you know, want to make sure that people know, I understand that you're a reputable developer, right? Because I've seen you with your projects before, but I want to make sure that we address the, you know, maybe this gentleman is just now finding about this stuff. And, you know, if I were living and I just found out something, it shocked the heck out of me, right? So I'm just trying to.
Absolutely, absolutely. We take privacy very important because it affects the quality of the product that we produce. And if I produce a product and it has no privacy, then I'm going to be out of business. That's not the approach I take. Landscaping has a huge impact. That's the hardest, the hardest thing to convey to somebody is the impact that landscaping can have. So I, that's why I say I can't exactly demonstrate what the tree in the back is doing for the rear neighbor, but it has a significant impact toward reducing privacy impacts or concerns.
Thank you.
With regard to the redwood tree, did the arborist specifically look at the grading plan and consider any possible disturbance to the root system?
Great question, and I'll tell you in one second. I'll have Dylan look that up. They typically have, so on Laurel Street, there was even a specific measure of what was and wasn't supposed to go within the root zone system. And part of that is a study of with this particular species, are the roots coming down or are they spreading out? And some trees take one approach, others take another approach. And I can't tell you exactly, the approach that they're recommending is one that will preserve the tree. The tree's not going to go falling down anywhere unless lightning strikes it or, God forbid, some catastrophic event, but from our construction, it's not going to be impacted.
Well, I just, you know, the arborist can look at a tree in a vacuum or they can look at your grading plan and then look at the tree. Was that part of his review?
Part of his review, absolutely, was looking with our plans and not in a vacuum for that reason. And Kurt, our arborist, does all of the reports on all of our sites with all of our trees throughout San Carlos, and he does not look at any of them in a vacuum, but he looks at them specifically with construction in mind and the new project.
Okay.
Would there be opportunity for the arborist to inspect as the slab is removed to make sure that there's not a dangerous situation being created there?
It's part of the plan that they do come in.
The slab might be holding the tree down or something.
They, I always have them inspect it. And then when we're doing our foundation, even though it's 15 feet away from the property line, the tree is in another, a few feet beyond that, there's an approach to digging where, again, you're digging very carefully in case you come across any major root system. The arborist, again, given the exact species those, if there are going to be roots that are shallow or roots that are deep. And, you know, in experience, I've had foundations six feet away from a giant sequoia and we hit a major root and we had a technique for working around it with our structural engineer and the arborist. That tree 10 years later looks better than it did then.
Yeah, we had one in one project where the, it was oak, I believe, and its root system was like two and a half blocks.
They're enormous. There's an underground world. Yeah, it's enormous.
Yeah.
Seems like it should be a net gain for the tree moving the house off the corner there.
We also take sustainability very seriously and cutting down trees is not something that we consider sustainable.
Especially in redwood, right?
Especially redwood, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Should we close the public comment? Period.
So I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Duken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Now we get to discuss it.
Is there discussion?
I generally like the plan, but I guess I share your skepticism, Shannon, on perhaps that parking study with one data point and a very concerned neighbor, so I'm not exactly sure what to do with that. Otherwise, I like the project.
Well, in my experience, there's really not a heck of a lot we can do. We fought this battle over years, right? So they've met code requirements. We can't tell someone that they can't do something that, you know, they have the right to.
Well, I mean, it is a conditional approval of, we are relieving parking spaces by code here, but given that they're carports and will not be used as storage as 98% of San Carlos does, I think these residences will actually use those to park their cars, so that gives me comfort here.
Do we, do you agree that we could have in this CCNR that the parking space is provided in the plan be used solely for the purpose of parking?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Hopefully, it won't matter to anybody, but somebody might have the idea that they're going to convert that into their workshop or something.
The one thing that I'd like to see added, and it can be approved by staff, but the one thing I'd like to see added is that there be either a reel or a faux articulation on the sides of the building at the discretion of you and staff. I just don't want it to look like a, one flat surface on the, I mean, I know you've, I think on the third floor, you've done fine, but on that second floor, it really just looks like two long surfaces. And if you would do something to trick the eye, you guys know how to do that stuff better than I do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would, that would be the thing that matters.
There is, the elevations do show, I think those trees will come up and actually address that pretty nicely depending on specifically what gets planted there. That gives me comfort on that.
That's the only thing, because I think they've, I think they've done everything plus the year of TDM measure, right? But I think they've, I mean, electric cars, bike racks, the type of wood, close to transit, how they handle the driveways, the safety of the trees. I mean, they've pretty much checked all the boxes. So that's the only thing that I really would like to see is more articulation and I'm fine supporting, supporting you on the CCNR.
Okay. I'd like to point out that I think that our master plan, we want to have more multi-tenant housing close to transit, and this project is consistent with that. And when you bring that in into where it doesn't currently exist, these are going to be sort of the consequences. But when you add it all up, that's a plus in my mind. And I think the design, to me, it's quite appealing. I appreciate that it's just three units and that the overall mass of the project is quite a bit less than the code, than the code would allow.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So it seems quite restrained and respectful of the area, and so I applaud that. The parking, it's sort of like each individual, you kind of, okay, we have to do that, but when you start putting together multiple projects and, oh, they can park down the street becomes, but I'm not sure that we can solve that on this unit. I would hope for larger ones, the value of visitor spots would be weighed heavily in the sign.
Well, I don't know if anyone's interested, but I've been a lot studying on TDM and buildings around TDMs and people, like you said, they do self-select.
Yeah.
So I know that most people think that everyone's going to be driving forever, but I think we're going into an era where that's just not feasible and things will shift. I mean, the Grand Boulevard Initiative and all that stuff going down, up and down on the community, it's all about being near transit, so.
So I will move that the Planning Commission grant approval for design review, conditional use permit, the waiver, and a tentative map to allow the construction of one new three-story building with subterranean parking of three townhouses at 575 Prospect Street, APN 050 034 120 for the reasons incorporated in the staff reports and with the condition, in the conditional use permit, code compliance certificate, and tentative map certificate. And we'll add that the owners, the new residents' owners understand that the two carports are to be used for car parking only.
And that they create either a reel or illusion of articulation on both sides of the building on the second story.
Accepted.
Just a second.
I said, accept your amendment to my motion.
Greg, is that an adequate statement of the conditions?
It sounds like what you've been discussing, so it's just the two additional conditions are that the CCNRs will have a restriction, that the parking, the carport parking spaces will be only used for parking and not for storage or other uses, and then a actual or visual articulation on the second story of the building. That's what I heard.
And that could be agreed upon between them and the planning department, yeah.
With that, I second the motion.
Commissioner Roof?
Agree.
Commissioner Duken?
Approved.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Positive.
We're all different, four answers.
Thank you all for coming and speaking, keeping our city the city of good living. Next is 171 Industrial.
Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. I'll be giving the staff presentation. The item before you is a design review. The item before you is a design review and variance request for a new freeway-oriented pole sign at 171 Industrial Road. All right, just for a bit of background, the new billboard that was recently approved by the Planning Commission and is scheduled for a lease agreement approval by the City Council at 815 American Street includes the removal of the existing billboard located at 171 Industrial Road. And that billboard is shown here. A freeway-oriented sign for the business located at 171 Industrial Road, Eurotech, is attached to that billboard. The proposed signage is to replace that sign that's attached to the billboard with a new pole sign, and that is at a height of 30 feet tall. The sign cabinet would be 10 feet by 16 feet with display area. And they would install a decorative pole cover at the base of the structure. The billboard located above will be removed in three years. And at that time, the structure just above the cabinet will be removed so that the sign cabinet stands alone without the billboard. There's also a condition of approval that the temporary banner at the rear of the building is required to be removed. And any future banners shall be required to comply with the city's sign ordinance. This is a close review of the proposed pole sign. It will be externally illuminated. Staff feels that the findings can be met for the Planning Commission to grant the design review as well as the variance for the freeway-oriented pole sign. The property is uniquely constrained. That is a flag lot. So it would be difficult to have a monument sign or different signage along Industrial Road. So there's a pole sign there now. And so the variance would be to allow two pole signs where the code allows one. And given that the property is a flag lot and there's very few of them within the city and within this neighborhood, staff finds that that's a unique situation that would support the granting of the variance. The sign is also professionally designed, will be constructed of high-quality materials. And the design and size of the signage is appropriate for the site and in keeping with other signage in the neighborhood. So that supports those design review findings contained in your staff report.
And I'm sorry, can you summarize? What is the variance here?
Sure, so the variance is twofold. One is for the size of the sign, and the other is for, to allow two pole signs on a property where the code allows one.
Okay.
Which are the two, two signs?
There's one at the front of the property along Industrial Road. And there's a photo of that in the, in the staff report. And then this would be the new pole sign at the rear of the property. And this new pole sign at the rear is replacing the existing signage that's attached to the billboard. It's essentially the same size.
The new sign is the same size as the existing?
Essentially, yes. But it's, when that signage was approved, it was actually located within the county of San Mateo under different regulations. The property annexed quite some time ago, and that sign was considered to be grandfathered in. But when the billboard comes down, that sign then would be removed because it's part of the billboard structure. So what they're looking to do is kind of formalize and legalize in that condition with a new pole sign. If you see on page three of the staff report, there's the sign to the left, it's a blue pole sign, and that displays the Eurotech. What you see beyond it is the adjacent building. And so that's, was it House of Rikers? So that's giving, helping give direction down to the business that's on that flag lot.
And the billboard will be removed within three years?
That's correct. The billboard will be removed in three years.
And so that's, that billboard is owned by the person who's developing the other billboard? And that's why we can have, we can require that this one be removed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Is the applicant going to speak, or?
The applicant is here this evening if you have any questions, yes.
I have a question about the illumination. Because there's a general thing that our sky is kind of brightly lit at night and this is a consequence of being in the city. But there's efforts to reduce that. And I wondered what kind of illumination, what level of brightness. There's one billboard along 101 towards Redwood City that almost blinds me when I drive by. I'm surprised at how bright that thing is.
So just to introduce myself. So I'm Bruce Qualls with Clear Channel Outdoor. So I'm working with our landlord, Mr. Michael Keenajod, who's a local property owner and the owner of the business there. And just to reiterate, he's had his sign in that location for a long time here, back when it was originally grandfathered through the county. And our goal here was to make sure that he was happy after we ended up relocating our sign. We're removing our sign as part of the conditions of approval for building the new sign at American Street. So your question was with regard to the amount of illumination on his, his sign? So.
That's why we're approving tonight. So I guess we don't get to talk about the other billboard.
Yes, yes, understood. Well, I had provided some information on that to staff. And we, one question was to make sure that the illumination wasn't excessive.
We can further evaluate that. We have a consultant that has a little more expertise in lumineers. And so we can make sure that that is appropriate for the nighttime sky.
Just a thought, that that kind of business, I can see why you want the sign during the day and the evening, but not necessarily need to be illuminated all night necessarily. Is that something that could be on a timer? Are these things typically left on all night long? Just trying to get educated about how these signs work.
My name is Michael Keenajod. I'm the owner of the property, and I have a partner. I invested in property back 1998. At 2002, I, it's pretty much reorganized and spent almost $4 million for that property. I pay more than $1 million because of that sign. And I wanted to rent that sign. It's not just via daytime to other businesses and including, I'm the property owner and currently operating renting, paying the rent to my other company for that sign. It's not going to be a daytime sign. It's going to be 24 hours a day. And I expect to have the income from that sign. It's not just, it's not going to be because they want to move out and rent it to Eurotech. So I guess I try to clear myself. It's not just going to be a daytime sign. And the purpose is going to be a 24-hours-a-day rental sign.
Just to clarify, the sign can only advertise the onsite business. This pole sign cannot advertise any other off-site business or entity. So it can only be used to advertise the onsite business like it's proposed?
That wasn't my deal with the city. It's going to be a 24-hours rental. Be rented to the existing tenant. Whoever's going to rent the property, going to rent it to those people.
The sign follows the tenant's business?
I think that the, the sign can, under the city's code, can be used by whoever you rent the premises to. So if it's, if it's not a Mercedes business and some other business in the future, they can be on that sign. But you can't put general advertising on the sign. You can't lease the sign app to put advertising on it.
Well, I had the outdoor business, outdoor license for advertising at the past. And like I said, I pay more than $1 million just 2002 because of this sign. And I had the sign on a property since back 1940s. Unfortunately, I couldn't find the picture of the property with the sign in it. That's the reason I purchased and I paid extra for the sign. Now, the city agreed to with the Clear Channel to move the sign somewhere else. Nobody told me that's be possible to do it. Also, I applied for the LED sign for the property back 2003 because the business was the first certified facility in Northern California. Then we want to do advertising. Unfortunately, the city refused. It said, no, we don't give anybody to put LED sign in a property. And then I was wondering, then all of a sudden, I see LED sign all over the place. So then, the other thing is the city, there is a rule with the city, supposed to be 750 feet from the property won't allow for any new billboard to be close to another billboard. But the city, they gave the permit to my neighbor. Without the permit, they build a new billboard right next to my property. It's less than 400 feet. So those are the agreements. If they want to move it, then I keep my sign with my permit, license for the sign to be able to rent it out.
What's before you tonight, Commissioner, is the pole's proposed variance for a pole sign. It's not any, it's not about the billboard. So I'm not, I'm really kind of confused. I just want to make sure that you understand what the application and what the commission is considering. They are considering allowing you to keep a pole sign on Industrial Road. They're authorizing that even though the billboard's going to be removed at the end of the current billboard agreement you have with Clear Channel, that this sign can remain, but it's not going to be a general advertising sign. It's going to be a sign for whatever business you lease your property to.
Well, then whoever wanted to rent it, I give him this, rent it out and have a landlord, I mean, a tenant, they be able to put the sign there.
A tenant that you, that whatever type of legal business that's allowed on your property will be able to put a sign for their business on the property. So right now, it's a Mercedes service center. They'll be able to have the Mercedes service center. If it's leased out to another type of business, a car dealership or whatever, then that car dealership will be able to use this sign. But it won't be for general, you won't be able to have advertising from off-site businesses rent this pole sign from you. It has to be the business on that you're leasing to.
For what reason I can't do that?
It's illegal under the city's code. It would, that would turn it into a billboard.
Okay, that's under the code of the city. How come it was, they permit the neighbor to build, without the permission, to build a new billboard right next to my property?
I don't know what billboard you're talking about because I think there's a couple of billboards there.
181 Industrial Road.
There's no new billboard at 181 Industrial Road.
Yes, you bring the picture on a screen. You can look at it, right there.
Those billboards have been there for years.
That billboard, when I moved in, that was moved forward, and he operated without the license. And he knew some people in the city. I don't know, he pay off or whatever. He were available.
Sir, sir, nobody paid off anybody at the city.
Well, let's look at the record.
Those billboards, I can tell you, have been there for decades. All the billboards have been there for decades.
I can prove that you're wrong. You can show me the permit. He erect that billboard without the permit. And this is between that billboard and my billboard. It's less than 750, 750 feet.
I mean, I'm not going to, I don't know for a fact when they were built, but I know they've been there for a very long time.
I'm sure you know about the law. When you're referring to the code of city, then you explain it to me. How come that's less than 750?
Up until about 2000, this was in the county of San Mateo, first of all. And second of all, part of the standards you're talking about are Caltrans standards for distances between billboards.
Okay, then, then it's not my problem. If it was ignored by the city, it's the city's problem, not me.
Sir, I'm, all I can tell you is what is up before the commission tonight is a variance that would allow you to have an exception from the code to have two pole signs on your property. And they are not going to be used for off-site advertising. They can only be used for onsite advertising, which is the business physically located on your parcel.
Well, I mean, this, I've been a witness this, that billboard been rented out without a permit to other businesses over the years since I purchased the property.
Well, I don't really want to get into a big debate about the billboard, but the billboard agreement that you have with Clear Channel has an expiration date. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
It wasn't permanent. It's, it's got an expiration date. And Clear Channel is going to remove the current billboard. And there won't be any right to have a billboard there anymore after that.
Well, that's beside this, we're switching from my rights and you telling me about the city courts. And then you ignoring what the city ignore and allow the neighbor to build a new billboard without a permit. And now you're telling me it's not the city's problem?
Sir, I think that billboard's been there before this area was incorporated in San Carlos. I think that's the answer to your question.
Well, the answer to your question, then let me answer. That building is still, when I moved in and purchased the property, it was four-digit. Then switched from Belmont to San Carlos. That's why my address was 1800, now it's 171. The neighbors still have a four-digit number on a building.
You know, sir, the neighbor to your north is still in the unincorporated county. I don't know exactly where the line is. It's near Belmont Creek. Everything south of Belmont Creek is now in the city of San Carlos.
But my question, that doesn't matter. Still, the San Carlos is under the same law. San Carlos, they are San Carlos. And you're telling me that they, they're renting it to, actually, I think it's Adco Companies. They're renting the billboards. And they, they had it for that many years since they were fighting with the city regarding the billboard. They were operating without a permit over the years.
So this is all a little bit beyond what we're supposed to be reviewing tonight. But very briefly, so this existing structure is on this gentleman's property, correct? But does he not own it? Clear Channel owns it?
There's, there's an agreement between Clear Channel and the property owner that's been in existence for, I don't know how long, but a long time that billboard's been there. It may have, Clear Channel was, became a successor to that site. So it's been there for a long time. Clear Channel's the current owner of the billboard structure.
Okay, so Clear Channel, you have a lease on his property to put up your billboard, and you're now choosing to terminate the lease. And you have an agreement for another billboard on an adjacent property or something?
Another property in San Carlos.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and then Greg, you mentioned he's getting a variance to have two pole signs. What is the second pole sign?
There's one pole sign on the industrial road frontage of this flag lot. And then there's the, this sign that's being replaced under this proposal.
I see, yeah. So gentlemen, you're actually getting basically an extra sign facing 101 because this is typically not allowed.
As you know, this is an existing sign, a grandfather sign.
But it's not owned by you is the problem.
But I had it since 1998. I purchased the property. I put the sign on a pole. Nobody said anything about it till the city decided they, they allow the Clear Channel to build a sign. There is no, there is no sign further down to build them, allow them to get the permit.
So my concern. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, so my concern here is just the visual effect of two signs. I mean, this is going to look terrible for a period of time until this gets removed. I have no doubt we're going to get concerns, complaints, et cetera. Why three years, Clear Channel? And why can't this be done right away?
I think there were two rationales for that. One was we were going to continue to pay a rent stream. One was we were going to continue to pay a rent stream to Mr. Kina Jod during that time period, so that would keep him whole during that time period.
And when does your lease with the gentleman end?
In May of 2021.
Okay, so that's what's driving this? Okay.
That was part of it. The other part of it is the city also, in this circumstance, had a bigger financial interest than in the first circumstance, the initial digital billboard that we built here in town. And so that combination of things, we had to reach farther too. So in so doing, it helped sort of lead us to that end.
So to keep this really simple, for us people with simple minds, if we say yes, what happens? If we say no, what happens?
Well, I'll just repeat what's in the staff report. If you say yes, you're granting a variance that will legalize this pole sign on the 101 freeway frontage and allow for the other pole sign on Industrial Road. That variance will be granted. It'll run with the land. What you're not approving is off-site advertising or the creation of a mini billboard on this property. It is only for onsite advertising purposes, consistent with the code. That sign will remain after the billboard is removed. And they, I don't know physically how they're going to do it, but it looks like they're going to cut the pole at the top of the sign, the onsite pole sign. And the billboard will be removed and it'll be gone and it won't return. Because having a billboard there, absent, following a very complicated set of rules in our code, won't be allowed there.
Okay, so by saying yes, billboard's there. If I say no, it comes down?
If you say no today, then the current sign that is attached to the billboard will remain, but in three years, it probably would be removed along with the billboard sign because the sign won't meet, because they need a variance to have the two pole signs. Or the other sign could go down to, the one on Industrial could potentially go down to.
It's if we say yes, right? They're taking all the legal stuff out you guys have been going about. But if we say yes, that benefits you, right?
Yes, I just want to add one thing. I sent a series of pictures, the evidence what I refer to, I spent almost $4 million for this property. I was the first authorized facility for Mercedes in Northern California. I spent, this place was a dump. I'm sorry to say that. If you look at the property, the next door, I was referring to that billboard, look at the face of that building, and I sent a bunch of, series of picture of the property I sent to Mrs. Sanders. And you could see, imagine how that property was. All was dirt and they had a gorilla on a roof for advertising, balloon and all kinds of things. Then I landscaped the whole area. I received a beautification certificate from City of San Carlos. I spent millions of dollars for that property.
But we have, we can only make one choice, yes or no. And it has to be on what's put before us. So we can't go outside the bounds of what's in this package.
I understand. I'm just trying to tell you here about my story. I spent all that money, I spent a million dollars, the extra, 2002, I bought, I paid my partners and I bought the whole properties because of the sign income, not because of the property. I mean, I'm sure you guys are familiar with.
Nothing to do with your investments.
Yes, well, it's referring to the rules of the city. I respect that. And I pay, I'm the taxpayer, I paid plenty of tax for the property, everything. And then now, all of a sudden, I knew we cannot build a new billboard, then all of a sudden, this billboard is going to come down and it's going to go somewhere else. Who's going to allow it? Is the city of San Carlos. That's what I'm holding the city of San Carlos responsible for, all this activity. And then I see that my neighbor, without the permit, he built a new billboard and the city gave him allowance to give him a permit. And he's in business. Now they fighting because I cannot rent this billboard to somebody else.
So I think this is, I think this is something that we would need to bring up through the normal channels, right? And if we were in public comment, we'd be discussing this in public comment as a new item or a new agenda item or something that he needs to work with you on with Greg.
Yeah, I've kind of allowed some of the discussion because a lot of it's factual background, but what it's devolved into is a claim that the applicant here is making. I don't know if it's a claim he's actually making or if it's just he's frustrated by the process. He's communicated with the city before, and I'm aware of that communication. I thought this issue was resolved, but if it's not resolved, that doesn't mean anything tonight. That just means that it may not be resolved. But if you can make the findings tonight or not for this variance that the gentleman has applied for, and I don't know if he wants that anymore or not, but it sounds like he still wants the variance. And then we'll see what happens from there.
Do we routinely grant signs on 101 to businesses like this?
We don't routinely grant two pole signs. This is a variance. Their difficult staff is supporting the variance in this case.
I'm against them.
Staff supporting the variance because of the nature of the flag lot and the fact that there's not a lot of visibility on the Industrial Road side of the parcel. So the sign that's there now, staff can support that because of the lack of visibility of the building and the facilities because of the flag lot. And then the freeway side, correct me if I'm wrong, there's an existing sign there. And so the request is, can you accommodate my existing sign? I want to upgrade it. And so that's the basis for the variance. You have to make a finding that there's something unique about the property that justifies the variance.
So, you know, I want to say, I want to acknowledge that I hear what you're saying as far as the rules sort of changing, or your perception that the rules have sort of changed in this process. I wish we could fix that for you here tonight, but that's something that's out of our purview. But I just want to know that we hear you, but you're going to have to take that up with the city. But I assume you still want us to move forward with this variance, right?
Yes, I just wanted, you just mentioned you're against giving anybody a permit, everything as we're speaking, you're already giving a permit for somebody's, there is no billboard in property in America.
I think that might be on county property, because I don't, it sounds to me like that has not come before us. And, you know, I definitely acknowledge and empathize with what you perceive as an economic loss. I mean, unfortunately, you know, I don't think you ever owned a billboard. I think you leased a billboard that had a defined end date, and unfortunately, that date is three years from now. So I think that's sort of what you're up against. We're considering allowing you a sign that isn't often allowed here. I guess I would ask, does, given that we potentially aren't, you know, I guess I would ask you, sir, should we further resolve where you're at with the city before we fully consider this sign?
I mean, my understanding was this is going to be the billboard for my property, it would be for money I paid, at least it paid it off. I could have spent a million somewhere else and I would have much better opportunity right now. With the issue like they mentioned with the flag lots right now, all the neighbor parking in the Eastman, I don't have.
We can't solve that here tonight, though.
That's fine.
But you have been heard.
Yes.
And if I were, I just want you to know that we do hear you, and I'm really not trying to dismiss you, but we can't solve that here tonight.
I understand.
But we can do our little part here, which is to give you this variance.
I appreciate that these, you hear me and you see what's going on.
I read in the report that the banner sign on Eurotech's building, which is you own, was going to be removed also.
Yes, for sure. Actually, we are in process of remodeling the property to redo the painting and cleaning up. We were expecting when they're going to remove the structures, they're going to dig up the concretes and fix up the concrete and asphalt. And we do it all once, we're going to put the new gates, designer gates and all that stuff, we're going to fabricate and take care of it. But I just saw a surprise, all of a sudden, they mentioned turn the lights off at night, then this, all of a sudden, it came in my mind, this is not going to work for me. I want it to be an income for the property, at least if I'm not there, Eurotech's not there, I listed somebody to somebody else.
So, sir, I definitely hear you and empathize, but I also hear you saying that this is not going to work for you. So I think we have more work to do on this to make sure your application is completely understood by the city. So I think I'm of a mind not to approve this at this point.
We're not, let's, if we're going to do something, let's close public hearing first.
Yeah, we're in, yeah. Yeah, I think some deliberating to do after the public comment period.
Yeah, I will, we closed the public comment, public hearing, I was going to mix it up.
I second that.
Can you repeat that? I believe we're talking over here, so.
We closed the.
Close public hearing.
Thank you.
We need a roll call.
Agree.
Commissioner Dukin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Positive.
All right, discussion.
Discussion's open.
I, well, me personally, I'm inclined to approve the variance just because there are interesting circumstan, not interesting, there are circumstances around this that I think that he probably does have some legitimate.
Yeah.
Over and over. And I'd like to be, otherwise, I'd be saying no, wholeheartedly, because I don't like these freeway signs, because I think they distract drivers. But I, considering the circumstances, I'm willing to vote yes for this variance, because it seems like there is enough justification in the, that would permit us to give that variance. That's just my personal opinion.
Excuse me, can I add one more thing?
We've closed the public hearing part. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And Shannon, I agree with you. I do think there's circumstances here that may warrant this variance. And I am sympathetic to the gentleman, and this might be helpful to him and his business. But we meet twice a month, and I just think we should get cycled further with this particular applicant and get to the point where we feel like everyone is agreeing to what's going to move forward. And so I think I would, at this time, not support.
You get a vote and I get a vote, right?
I'm hearing that what you're saying, but correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, is that you might want to put it over to one meeting to iron some of this stuff out. Is that what I'm hearing, or is it something that you're?
Yeah, I'm not saying I want to not approve this. I guess I'm saying I would like a further staff recommendation that we're resolved with this applicant. And we feel like the city is in a position of closure here before we approve this sign.
It's not necessary that we do that, I don't think, but I just want to make sure that you have all your questions answered before you act on something like this. Keep in mind that variances are related, they're not related to the circumstances of the individual party or the individual business or anything. It's related to the land. It's something unique and unusual about the land that justifies a variance, not something, not a claim or an allegation or a misunderstanding or whatever's going on here tonight. So I think it's, the staff has set it up so that the findings are related to the configuration of the property as a flag lot that justifies the variance in this case. And that's the basis for doing it. It's not any kind of plea or argument or claim or, you know, misinterpretation of the facts that justifies it. It's simply the configuration of the property.
I appreciate that. I guess then my final question would just be to staff, is your recommendation still to approve this, given the conversation with the applicant this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, my concern is understanding the basis for the variance, because I can imagine other people might like to put signs up along there. And we'd be faced with a situation where they say, well, this guy got two, I want to do the same. So are there additional lots, flag lots, whatever that is, I'm not even sure, there that, could this be opening the door to a dozen new signs with the same case?
Yeah, so properties are permitted one pole sign upon design review approval by the planning commission. So if another business wanted one pole sign, then they could make that application, you would need to review it. What's unique here is the request for the two pole signs. I did do an inventory of properties that would qualify, and there's very, very few. One is the Honda dealership down farther on Industrial Road, and they did obtain a variance for signage due to the unique configuration. But here, I think there's just a couple, like one or two adjacent, but there's very few within the city that would qualify.
Page 146, basis for findings, a unique property configuration presents a hardship for economically viable use of the property. The granting of the application will not be detrimental to interest to the property or improvements in the vicinity and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, general for convenience. Basis for finding, the granting of the variance is limited to the signage to the site to replace existing signage and would not be detrimental to the public health, safety and general for inconvenience. That's what it's coming.
That's what they're asking.
And keep in mind that these land use decisions that you make as a planning commission, there's no precedent. You have to look at each application on their set of facts. So a future applicant for a variance, you could, if you, you don't have to even distinguish your decision, you just have to say, no, I can't make the findings based upon the evidence and the record on that application. I mean, there's a lot of variables that you could point to in that circumstance, but I think staff's supporting this particular application. I think, I'm probably repeating myself, but the configuration of the lot and the fact that both these signs exist now, and they've existed for quite a while on this property, I think that's part of the evidence that makes this unique, just like all land use decisions are unique. So you don't, I mean, I hear this argument a lot, that people say, well, you granted it for that person, but it's not persuasive and the courts don't support that type of analysis.
Thank you for that explanation.
Normally, I don't like to support billboards or signs along major freeways, because I think they're a health and safety hazard. I do, I do agree with granting the variance because of the flag lot situation, but it looks to me like the small sign that's there now is not lighted, and I couldn't support keeping it lit 24 hours a day. It should be a directional sign. Eurotech or whoever might move in there in the future probably isn't going to be open 24 hours a day. I can't see any justification for lighting it 24/7 in the future.
And that's just my opinion. I mean, average, people, I think that some, I mean, people are on the highway more than just 12 hours a day. So there's people that are potential customers that could be driving down the highway, you know, at 2:00 AM after they come home from their midnight shift or swing shift. And that's just my, that's just my opinion. That's why we have more than one of us, because they all have opinions.
And just to clarify, the existing sign is currently externally illuminated. There are lights on it.
So I guess, I mean, our choices are to, we are to vote or to continue. And if we continue, we need to give staff instructions on to why and what we would want in order to do that. And what, you know, there's got to be a reason we would ask them to do that. What other information are we looking at for them? And it can't be resolved, this issue with him, it has to be related to, you know, why they're saying that the variance is warranted in this case or recommended in this case.
Yeah, I think, Don, you were perhaps suggesting a limitation on the lighting hours. I mean, is that where you're at?
I don't, I'm not going to make the motion. I'll let someone else.
You put the motion up.
The variance that we'd be granting says the sign shall be in conformance with the sign plan prepared by YESCO. So that says that it would be an externally illuminated sign. And I guess the amount of illumination would be subject to the normal rules that the city would enforce. So it wouldn't be a neon, a neon or a LED sign, but it would be externally illuminated. So it's on the range. So, it's, I'm the range of things that personally, I guess that would, you know, I would have thought maybe it could go off late at night, but, but I could probably stomach an externally illuminated one as long as that's.
Well, it won't be as bright as the new one Clear Channel puts up, so.
Well, that's a different story, I guess.
All right, I move that the planning commission approved the design review and variance for the new freeway oriented pole sign at 171 Industrial Road. Someone second or it dies? Don't want to second it, then you guys gotta tell us the next thing to do because that doesn't happen that often.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Approved.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
No.
Oof.
Would you like us to go on to reports of correspondence?
No, correspondence is first, yes.
Yeah, we don't have any reports or correspondence. The city council had their summer recess. We will have your next meeting on September 4th. It's a Tuesday and that'll be talking about the single-family home guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other business or announcements, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.